And then it just sits there.
What's her name?
Terry.
If it's her. So which one's updated here? I guess there was said.
She didn't eyebook it?
No, the one that is.
So we can't hear a lot of this stuff.
There's continued ones on.
Because this is iOS.
What are you going to do for Satchin's path?
Got you. What happened to Terry?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to be like stripping down now. It's so hot back there.
But anybody can vote on it today.
Right, right.
I probably. I mean, what are they looking for?
It's a bunch of little things here and there.
Yeah, basically technical changes.
I had a couple.
Toscana has been contracted to begin the, apparently that first phase of that work.
It does.
And I'm not sitting on it.
You're not sitting on it either?
The Satchins? Well, should you sit on it?
No.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. Some people working on it before. But anybody can vote on it.
You don't have to accept.
Okay. I didn't know.
Yeah, this is a new, it would be a new.
Okay. Well, I audited it. I mean, I paid attention, but.
Mostly.
So they can go before, he can go before a four-member board if he wants.
Or is it this?
David, Terry.
No, it's the one that's highlighted. That's the new one. Okay, so are we ready? This is the regularly scheduled January 9, 2014, Town Nantucket Zoning Board Appeals Meeting. Can I get a, no, we don't have the minutes. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as modified here?
I'll make that motion.
A second. All right. The minutes, we don't have them right now, so we're going to postpone that until February 13. Those are the minutes of September 12 and December 12. So, we're on to our business. We do have quorum problems today, as some of you may or may not know. This is it. And so, and some of us can't sit on certain things.
Michael Marv has agreed to apply the Mullen Rule for the two issues that would be affected by the farm in your business.
Okay. One, two, three. I don't think that, what about?
That would be four with him.
Oh, four with him.
And the complex that exists for the city board members, he would be a fourth eligible.
All right, well, we'll go over it case by case, but it's just an FYI. Health and travel problems getting back here, I guess. So anyway, we're going to start with 76-11, Proposed Amendments to Satchin's Path 40B. So, it's our understanding this is new, so we, the old board members don't have to sit on it. And Jeffrey's not sitting on it.
Yeah, I understand.
Oh.
Don't get scared by what I hand it out. My goal is to make this easier, not more complex. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, attorney on behalf of the applicant. You have probably, much to your liking, not seen us for a long time. And so we will hopefully only be seeing you twice. Wanted to give you a preface to why we're here and to what I just handed out to you. Excuse me. We are getting ready for now to begin construction. The hope is to start the infrastructure work in the middle of March. As part of that, we went to mass housing, as we discussed during the original approvals, and for their review of the final comprehensive permit. We also reviewed the actual construction protocols with the Nantucket Housing Authority, and Renee Sealy from the Housing Authority is here. I also should say sorry, I should have started off Adrian Danner from the Housing Assistance Corporation, and Kevin McGuire, who's the project consultant that are here with me as well. And as we went through the comprehensive permit, really with an eye-tooth to where starting work, several changes in for mass housing were requested and/or desired or clarifications. The first page of what I just handed out to you is a memo where I took the Exhibit A that I had previously submitted, and I broke down the minor amendment changes that were seeking into categories. And I wanted to go through those briefly with you. I also gave you attached that a revised Exhibit A. In talking with the Housing Authority, they had requested some additional changes. What I wanted to mention and stress to the board is that nothing that's in here is substantive. There are no changes to the design of the subdivision, the, any, you know, sidewalk, houses, roads, landscaping, open space, all of that stays the same. So nothing in here deals with any of the substance, the meat of the proposal. It all deals with, as we'll go through it, better clarifying where the fence is going to go, noting about the infrastructure work so we can begin, and addressing the comments for mass housing. In that regard, the first category that I noted down, I called naming fencing and description clarifications. And there's one provision in the Exhibit A that I'll mention, number seven, that deals with that. Category two is financing and infrastructure clarifications. There are some things that we are requesting, and we'll go through that, that clarify what we're doing and how we're doing it. Number three, category three of the mass housing required changes, and I broke it into 3A and 3B. 3A are requirements where I said no concern. That no concern is between us and the Housing Authority. We have dealt with them, worked with them closely, and they're okay with those changes that the state are requiring. 3B are three areas where the Housing Authority has some questions and concerns, and wanted to seek not only your, obviously, input in all of it, but also, hopefully, town council's review of it, to make sure that from the town's perspective, you're okay with it as well. Our goal, then, is not to ask you for a vote today, but to share with you, go through this briefly or not, answer whatever questions or input you might have today. And then the idea would be to continue for the February 13 meeting for a vote. We would hope to work with the Housing Authority's attorney and town council between now and then, if there are questions. You may or may not have any additional questions, but we'd like to address those. The thinking being is if we can have the vote on the minor amendment, if you so agree, by February 13 at the latest, that will enable the infrastructure work and the project to commence the middle of March. And I'll ask through the chair, as far as the revised Exhibit A, this is a chronological breakdown. Would you prefer that I just go briefly through, through it, even though the, not by category, but go through it by the numbers in the revised Exhibit A?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Okay. In that case, starting on numbers one and two on the revised Exhibit A, these are requirements of mass housing that were ones that at least we and the Housing Authority were fine with, and obviously, it's up to you to review as well. They clarify that the, in number one, that the subsizing agency might be, or the subsizing program might be under a different program. It just reflects what was in the project eligibility letter. Number two, many of these things that we're going to discuss, and this is where it first comes up, so I'll mention it to you. Mass housing has said that, as you know, we discussed at length that Amesbury Supreme Judicial Court case, and they want a number of provisions to be in the finding section and revised language in the condition section. So it's still in the decision, but it's in a different area. So number two, 2A is where this first comes up. They just want us to note that, according to the PEL, the project eligibility letter and state law, 25% of the units at a minimum must be offered to the owners earning no more than 80%. As you know, it's actually going to be more than 25%, but the state requires that we just list what is there. We've added a B to try to clarify, we never, we discussed this with you originally, but it never was, it was never noted in the decision that the applicant has entered into a development agreement with the Housing Authority. This sets forth all of the provisions of their contractual relationship. And so, requesting that we add that as a clarification into the comprehensive permit through this minor amendment. So it doesn't change anything, it's just referencing the fact that we have this development agreement, and that those agreements, the provisions of that are binding upon the parties. 2C, on the top of page two, is merely some additional language, again discussing the regulatory documents that will be entered into between the parties as required by the state. The state requires the documents for the units at 80% or under of AMI. The town is, they don't, the state doesn't care about those units that are in the 81% to 150% restricted. So there is a commitment here that most likely going to use the state documents anyway, but it gives the flexibility to work with the town on town documents as maybe helpful. Number three, and please stop me at any point if you have any questions. Number three on page two is one that we are requesting to clarify that the two, this, we discussed this, but the language was a little bit unclear, that the two homes that can be constructed as the marketing models may be constructed prior to a purchase and sale agreement. By necessity, if they're model homes, there won't be a purchase and sale agreement for them. So we're just asking to clarify that sentence. Number four, similarly regarding the landscape escrow security, we're requesting, because we have, it is a nonprofit and all the money is very sensitive, that requesting that 1/36 of the escrow be released as each lot is developed and that work being done. So that as the landscaping gets done lot by lot, they can get some of the money back. It will help with the cash flow for the development.
I have a question about that, if you want to do it as, or do you want to go through the whole?
No, 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 I think it makes sense to ask questions as you have them.
Okay, I don't remember exactly, but I thought the $50,000 escrow might have been to, for sort of development-wide landscaping, not per lot. I can't imagine we thought $50,000 was going to landscape every, all 36 lots. So I thought it was for the general landscaping, and therefore, it wasn't related to lot sales at all. And so this didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay.
And that was my recollection, but I did not go back and.
Yeah, I didn't check all the notes either, you know, to check everything. But, okay, that, valid question.
I would think that the landscaping of individual lots would be part of the PNS, and therefore, we wouldn't, you know, we don't need to be necessarily watchdogs on that, although I do remember long discussions about the landscaping. I just cannot imagine that we would have thought $50,000 would cover much of anything, so.
I did provide an alternative to address that point in this. If you look in the language, it said, "Alternatively, the applicant may, if you agree, provide a bond." And that would solve the issue as well, as opposed to tying up all of the money, but still having the security. If the board agrees with this language, and we could maybe strike, either strike the escrow, or if it works for the applicant, we could just go with the bond avenue, if that would be something that the board, you know, desires.
All right, well, that one needs to be just checked.
Okay.
I thought it was for, you know, what might be done. So I don't know what the hell it was, frankly, but I didn't, I didn't think it was for each individual lot.
No, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure it was for each individual lot, it was just the sense of as, because they're, because the landscaping will ultimately be lot by lot, there's no.
Well, I didn't, I didn't understand the relationship, that you get some of the little bits of the incremental escrow back as a lot is sold. I didn't, I didn't see the relationship, so. The bond, on the surface, sounds fine to me, the $50,000 bond. Versus getting 1/36 back.
And that would, and that would work, if that was the case, what we could just do is, we could just reflect the bond and not, you know, get rid of the sentence that I had, "Upon the sale of each lot, 1/36 of such escrow shall be released." Provide for the escrow, or have the sentences, alternatively, you could do the bond. And that would then leave it up to the applicant to, to make that choice. So that would be something we could certainly change.
Well, I think you'd want to strike, "Upon the sale of each lot."
No, 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 strike the first sentence that I wrote here. But that doesn't strike the rest of the sentence of the condition which covers it.
Yeah, all right.
I agree with you.
Just take a look at that.
Okay. Condition, or number five, which again is one of the mass housing ones, it is just, if you remember, we had a list of the things we have to comply with that you would need to review, and they said, "We can't include the regulatory agreement and the UDR under that because those are state documents." So that's just housekeeping, really, on that one. Number six, excuse me, this was, again, it was, for clarification purposes, the way it had been written, until you did all of the infrastructure, you couldn't get building permits. But we all agreed to do the infrastructure in phases. So this is a sentence which clarifies that the building permits shall not be issued until completion of that phase's infrastructure.
That's not how I remember it either. I thought we finally came down on, you were going to do all the infrastructure, again. This was a long time ago.
Didn't we have a dividing line?
Yeah.
There was a distinct dividing line on the plan, where we said, "This area would be done first," and then they could do the other.
Yeah, that's, again, not necessarily how I remember, but I didn't go back and check. I remember the whole phasing thing, but I thought at one point we had a discussion, well, we don't want half the road in, and all of a sudden it stops, dirt, boom, because the project, you know, fails for some reason, which we're not hoping. So I thought we had come down on, you do all the infrastructure, and that's why it reads that way.
What, my recollection, what we discussed is, is there were a few phases for the, for the houses. We were going to do the main road in, in that main section, as Mark said, on the left. The section on the right, we were going to rough in the emergency access for that gate out to the road, to the, out to the road, but that, it was just going to be roughed in with the utilities there, and that's where we were discussing the phases. That's my recollection of it.
Again, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, was the phase line roughly the Hooper Farm road continuation? Or do you have a plan that shows the two phases?
I could pull.
Is it that dotted line?
Yeah, yeah, the Hooper Farm, that's roughly, it was the sewer easement, and that's roughly, that's Hooper Farm, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it was roughly where the sewer easement was.
It just, you know, again, because it's worded this way, I think it, we had come down on, you do all the infrastructure. But we can check, but that's why I think it was worded that way. And then the phasing thing was discussed very early, not very early, I mean, throughout. And at the end of the day, it came down to, you do all of the infrastructure, which you agreed. But, you know, we can check, it was a long time ago.
Okay. Yeah, no, and that's why we appreciate the time today, so we have some time to check where you have questions. Okay. Number seven, this is one where we work closely with the Housing Authority, and to clarify, we had called, we had about three different words for open space on the property, on the plans, but we only didn't, we only said the word open space in the decision. So to clarify that, the Housing Authority had asked that we really clarify, and I went through the plan, and so you see it there, preserved open space, conservation restriction area, and undisturbed buffer areas. Those are the three types of open space that we have on the property. And we were clarifying that those are going to be delineated with a split rail fence, as we showed on the plan, and that that fencing goes around, it doesn't go all the way around the lots, because you didn't want a fence on the outside of the subdivision, but it fences off where the roads and the houses would touch the open space. So the people, you wanted to keep people out, you wanted to keep encroachment of houses, you know, playsets and things like that from it. So the language in 7A clarifies that. The language in 7B clarifies that's the applicant who's going to be erecting the split rail fence to start with. And then paragraph 7C, if you recall, on Lot 44, which is the little lot on the south of the conservation restriction area on the northwest part of the property, that was a little section of open space, and there's actually a dirt drive on that, which the Housing Authority uses to access two garages that they have on their adjacent property. They also have some mailboxes and a dumpster at the end of Benjamin Drive, and those encroach a little bit into that area. And so 7C clarifies that those items can be maintained and used, because that's how the only access they have to their garages. And then I just, at the end of 7C, was very clear about which lots were the open space lots. You know, Lot 43 was the conservation restriction land, 42 was open space except for the sewer force main, et cetera. And if you just read the rest of that paragraph, I was just identifying specifically lots 41 through 47, which are the open space lots of various types.
What was 46?
I'm sorry, which one?
I'm sorry, 44?
44, do you see the big lot 43? It's right below it. It's a real small, unique shaped lot.
Was that even on the plan before the 44?
Yes, it's on the, it's on the subdivision plan that you signed.
I see that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the reason why we kept it out of the conservation restriction area was because the driveway was there, and we all knew it was, you know, we had discussed that with you. We just wanted to clarify it.
I just can't find the cloud.
Okay.
And just so you know, it's unrelated to this, but the conservation restriction area, Lot 43, we're just about through negotiations with, through the town and the state on the conservation restriction document itself. So that document's being finalized right now as well. Okay, page four, number 12. This is one where there is a concern and an issue at the Housing Authority, and it's one where we wanted to talk about it with you and with town council. As you, there's a sentence in the document says, "Notwithstanding the above," which is the constrict, restriction language, "rentals of individual rooms are not allowed." And nobody has an objection to that. We don't have an objection to that, you obviously don't have an objection to that. Housing Authority does not. Mass housing does. They didn't like the fact that it is in the condition language in the decision, because it interferes, as they say, with their universal declaration, the UDR, the universal deed restriction. And their concern has been, and I don't necessarily expect us to resolve this now, I just wanted to share with you what the question is. This is one of those three areas where there is some concern, is that they don't want any restrictions on deed-restricted affordable housing that are not also imposed on fair market rate or otherwise other housing in a community. And so when they looked at that sentence, I'm speculating now, but when they looked at that sentence in a vacuum, they said, "Well, if other houses in, on Nantucket or in the community aren't so restricted, these shouldn't be." It is my understanding, I'm doing a little bit more checking, although we'd have to check with Leslie more specifically, is that that kind of a provision is typically used in subdivision approvals and/or homeowner's covenants. And we do have that sentence in our homeowner's covenant, so that's not an issue. Mass housing doesn't care about that. So we wanted to keep the fact that there'll be no room rentals, but it would be in the homeowner's HOA docket that you reviewed and we went over, and not in the decision itself, so we can still provide the intent and purpose of what we're trying to do, but not go against what mass housing will allow.
Well, if you go back to mass housing and let them know that in Nantucket, it is typical for subdivisions to include that language, does that change their opinion? Because it is, it is a, although it's not community-wide in every home, it's not that, it's not like this is the only area where that, the only development where that restriction is.
We had discussed that, if we have some backup, and that's why I said, I turned to Leslie, and that, not for today, obviously, but if we can document that, that in the local Nantucket affordable housing covenant, there's that provision, and in six subdivisions that have been approved over the last six years, that's a cut provision, I'd be more than happy to go back to mass housing and say, "Look, this is something that is typical in the community."
Great, because I, I think that, although it's, you know, great that it's also reflected in the HOA covenant, I don't really, that, it doesn't seem strong enough to me. Because you can change, I mean, the homeowners association can vote to change that, and this is sort of a, I think it's important for the.
Yeah, I definitely, it was definitely one of the ones I flagged.
And that's why we flagged this, we knew it was a question.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, as I recall, it seems like this came up because of the parking that was provided, and the board had concerns about if people were renting out rooms or basements or, you know, whatever, that there would be overfull parking and that wouldn't be accommodated.
Yeah, this was for all of the units, right? Not just the?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, subdivision wide.
Right, okay, just be one.
And again, we have no objection to it, it's just, we're trying to make the paperwork comfortable.
Wasn't the development of basement space not allowed?
Yeah, definitely.
Except for the Habitat houses had the ability.
Oh, okay.
But except for those four, you're correct.
But that still doesn't preclude you from renting a room.
Yeah, I mean, if it was a single person, they could rent.
Yeah, that is less likely to happen here in this, because the houses, as deed-restricted, more typically, a family is going to be in the house, which are going to be using the bedrooms. You know, it's not an empty nester community, but I appreciate what the concern is. It probably isn't as practically going to be a concern here, but that's why we wanted to raise it. I also wanted to point out on this issue and a couple other issues that we have, that if the categories 1, 2, and 3A are of the highest importance, as we're going through them, to let, to keep the project moving, if we come back in February, and, let's take this as an example, we haven't got an answer for mass housing, but it's something that's important to you. My suggestion at that point would be to request that you grant the minor amendment without that change. We'll leave that one there for now. We'll deal with it ultimately when we have to. But let's get all the other changes, if they're non-controversial, so that we can keep moving, and then we can keep working with mass housing.
Okay.
I don't think we'll have a problem with that.
All right. Number nine, there's a similar, similar one of those issues. It's partially okay and partially not. If you recall, mass housing requires that you cannot discriminate on the distribution of the 80% units throughout the subdivision. And if you recall, we had a very colorful spreadsheet showing you where the houses, we were planning on, these would be the 80%, these would be the 100, and this is how we do it. And we agree with all that. Mass housing was saying, you can't reference that specifically as the condition, again, because it's intruding on what they say is their right to enforce nondiscrimination. And so what we were suggesting in 9B on my thing, on my memo, on the exhibit, is to move that language to a finding, just to take it out of the conditions and move it into the findings. It was something that mass housing would allow. There was still a concern with the Housing Authority to just make sure that, well, it was questioning certainly, you know, if we all agreed to it, what's mass housing's concern about it? You know, I know what the, the answer is that they feel it, it's intruding on the programmatic jurisdiction that they have. So it's a question of how can we, again, satisfy that. I propose here to put it in the findings, but it's something I also propose to, if you agree, to discuss again with the Housing Authorities Council and Town Council, just to make sure we're on the same page.
If you're phasing in your infrastructure, you're going to know what that's going to, what's going to happen and where that's going to happen, where your income housing is going to be and where your fair market housing is going to be, because you're going to start on one side, right?
Oh, yeah, yes, oh, we're going to comply with that plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not changing, because the plan makes sense. It's just how it's referenced in the comp permit, that's all. It's not changing how it's going to be built.
But, doesn't seem to be a big deal.
Seems like San Antonio.
All right. 10. This is a longer one that I wrote. They tend to be rather lengthy. So on the bottom of page five is really what it comes down to, and I'll explain what we're trying to do. The applicant has been discussing with a local lender, the, to try to speed up title searches and the construction of the houses. What they're proposing to do is to take out a construction mortgage on the property of blank dollars. They wouldn't access any of the money, it would just, to begin with, it would be a construction loan. When a PNS came for a property, in order to speed up the construction of the house, the applicant would tap their line of credit, let's say I'm going to make up numbers, but $100,000, and they would build the house. And then, the buyer under that purchase and sale agreement is getting a mortgage with the same lender, or another lender, and when they get their mortgage to buy the property, the money that the applicant tapped on their line of credit gets paid off. So it's always going out for a house, in, back to zero, out for a house and back to zero. The original comp permit language didn't allow that, because there was the provision in the original decision, let me go back. There was a sentence, in the second sentence, the condition 22 prohibited any financing, you know, other than the lot by lot by the homeowner. And so what we're proposing in that new paragraph at the bottom of page five is to allow the construction mortgage to be provided on the whole subdivision, and I actually just went through very, step by step, what I just said to you. This is how it would happen. What was of concern and question, and we've talked about with the Housing Authority, is they naturally want to make sure that if the project, for whatever reason, didn't go forward, and remember, we had a lot of conversation about, what if against everyone's best wishes, the project gets half-developed and then stops? We have a provision in the comp permit that all the lots go back to the Housing Authority that have been undeveloped as of that time. The Housing Authority very rightly said, "If that ever happened, we don't want to lean on our property." And so the way this is set up, and we're going to be, we're continuing to talk with the Housing Authority, but the way this is set up is that there would be no lean on the property, so that if in fact, no, that the applicant stopped building, there'd be no money outstanding on the construction mortgage, because they would have been paying it off per lot that they borrowed on. So we're trying to set that up so that there would be no issue with that. And that's the provision, this tool, and what that. this tool. And what that does, by allowing them to get the construction financing, they can start building sooner, they can do just one title search for the whole property at the beginning. Otherwise, if you're doing forty mortgages, there're going to be forty title searches, forty lawyers, forty processes. This speeds it up considerably and lets them, not only for the buyer of the individual lot, but also for the applicant in building the houses.
Yeah, I remember our concern was, we also didn't want giant lien on the property.
Right.
Um, but a line of credit, there still would be a lien on the property. I don't see, even though you were paying it off as you go.
Oh, the lien would be there, but there would be no, but if you're paying it off as you go, there is no debt behind it. You know, the lien would have to be discharged, absolutely. But there's no issue with discharging a lien with a zero balance.
Right, but how, I, I see your point, but, so it'll be set up, so.
So the bank, the lender will only give you money based on getting the purchase and sale or having a closing for the lot. And so that, those, those.
No, it was you keep.
So the lender would agree that if it doesn't go forward, that they will release back to that, they will give, they will issue the lien releases for all of those other lots?
Let me, again, I'm going to turn it, Kevin, if you could.
And you guys.
He's been talking with the bank, so.
Oh, Kevin?
It's Kevin McGuire.
Is that okay?
So is there some, I guess, is there just some, I mean, I, I mean, without seeing the terms of the loan agreement, like is there some language that can be added that says that the, that the applicant agrees that they will not access the line of, this particular line of credit? I mean, I know it says it won't go for construction of ins, infrastructure, but some language that it's, can guarantee to us that you are not going to access that giant loan for the whole, you know, for something else.
Right.
To, to, to protect what, what was.
Yeah, cause normally you get a line, you can access it whenever you want it.
Right.
So if it's a line of credit, I mean, it's sketchy, a little.
What I proposed.
The, the construction, the construction loan is that you, you could.
Absolutely. And so, the condition also reads that he will provide the language, um, for review prior to the transfer of title. So before we start infrastructure, we need title, so between now and the middle of March, we will provide the language and everyone will sign off on that language. Um, so, so to your point exactly, we're going to provide the language.
And that will be included in this decision?
Well, no, that would be in the mortgage document. And where I included it in the decision, if you look in about the middle of that paragraph from page five, and, cause this would be a condition language, so the enforcement authority is here to make sure that what Kevin just said in the mortgage documentation happens. And I wrote that there would, I'm proposing that the funds will only be advanced once there is a valid purchase and sale agreement with a buyer for a lot to allow construction on such lot, on such lot to commence, et cetera. So I, so what I'm proposing is that that language would be in your comp permit. That would be the hook, the condition. And then, that would have to be reflected, as Kevin just said, in the actual mortgage instrument.
And how is the lender, so far, are they being receptive to that?
This condition was actually driven by the lender's concern, uh, that they needed appropriate collateral to avoid, uh, as Andrew said, for the individual closings. Um, so, so thus they said, "We'll provide the language."
So they're, they're supportive of this limiting that you can only use the funds as a lot is sold?
Absolutely, absolutely.
They were actually involved in the drafting of that particular paragraph.
You can understand our concern, right?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody, nobody, again, the intent is, nobody wants to change the intent of the obligation. Um, it's just a question of, kind of a cat and mouse on collateral. And if we can come up with language that's amenable to everybody, it will save the project time and money.
Agreed. I'm just having a third, you know, having the lender be the one that then is, is, you know, getting a lender to, to change their documents or augment them to fit our situation, it, that's.
Well, if that's a.
It's a mandatory review.
Right, well, if it's a condition, forget the lender for a moment. If you agree with this language, this is the binding condition. And if we can't satisfy it, or if the lender's not willing to agree to it, we can't get that loan. Otherwise, we'd be violating the comp permit, and that would lead to an enforcement issue, but.
Right, I get it. But what I'm trying to avoid is like, getting to a point where you guys have this big loan and then, right, like, something happens and you guys do violate. Not that you would want to, but if something happens and you've got this line of credit and then it becomes an enforcement issue where we had to have to go and fight it out, I'd rather just make sure that it won't happen.
I mean, what it, what is, I'm curious, what is the magnitude of the line you're thinking of getting?
You know, preliminary discussions have been talked about.
Right. That seems odd to me. I mean, you're getting, you're only accessing it when you're selling a house, so you have a PNS. In other words, someone's going to buy it and pay off your loan immediately. How, what were the budgets for the house construction?
Well, remember, there's a lot of, depending on which income group, um, there's, uh, public money that's coming in. So the construction mortgage isn't necessarily proportioned to a, a market rate house. Um, so, um, I think we had sized it at two million dollars would, would allow us to construct, um, seven homes. So we're just up to seven homes.
All right, so then the, I, I'm just trying to remember all this. So the buyers sign a PNS, they don't get, they are only getting a loan to purchase your completed building, which you are accessing the line to build, or, and other monies. You're not using their loan to build the house. They're only getting a loan, I'm just trying to.
They're getting the loan to.
To build the house.
I'm sorry, here's a very key provision. Um, the, the concept of, uh, the purchase and sale comes up in two places. Um, and so it comes up that we cannot get a building permit until we have a purchase, until we have an, a purchase and sale agreement. And the lender has subsequently said, "Okay, well, we're not going to lend funds against construction unless you have a building permit. Thus, you have a, an executed purchase and sale." So to an extent, that is where the purchase and sale ties into us directly receiving funds, not through the buyer, us really, uh, drawing the line.
So I think they're going to be using their line of credit to build a house, then the buyer gets a mortgage after that.
The buyer buys the finished house.
Yeah, they take us out.
I get to a far-off topic, but I know you guys talked about this before. So what happens then if, you know, you get the PNS, there's a financing contingency, you've already got your building permit, you've accessed your line of credit, you start construction, and then this person cannot get funding? And then, so, but then, so where are, all right. But then you're sort of mid-construction and?
And, and that's the business that we're in. And, um, you know, and we think there's demand on the island for, for affordable housing. And we hope that everyone, everyone will qualify, um, like maybe it's just really drawn, but we'll find out. So I think that's just part of, part of what we, our job to do.
But you're only constructing if you have a PNS, correct?
Correct.
Right, but just because they have a PNS, it's still, you still have a financing contingency that PNS is here and then, you know, the financing contingency can sixty days later.
I, I was under the misconception that you wouldn't start until, you know, all the contingencies were, were, yeah, the PNS is the weakness.
But that's not what you got, but that's not what was, when you guys discussed this. There was that.
And it's not like, in a normal situation, if you're, if someone was buying a house, buying a lot, and they had a contingency to get all their permits, they do that, then they get their mortgage, then they buy it, then they build it. That's in the more typical situation. Here, we're doing it where you have the pool of the affordables. Hope, somebody, as Kevin said, there may be the occasional person that doesn't qualify after they sign the PNS, but they're, they'll find somebody else, because that is the business that they do. But we're trying to, because it's the affordable housing, try, it's not the typical situation. What they're going to buy, as you said, Mr. Chair, is when they get their mortgage, they take out the previous mortgage, they then have the house.
I get that part, but I think our intention, and maybe it was worded incorrectly, or not incorrectly, but poorly on our part, that it wasn't just the PNS. You, you had to be fully qualified at that point.
I mean, I thought that you guys, when I, I mean, I didn't sit, I audited, but I thought there was a pretty big discussion about that because we didn't want to end up in this situation where, because you are dealing with a major, I mean, they are high-risk buyers, because they're not, right? I mean, they're buying at a reduced rate because they're.
Well, reduced rate, but I wouldn't say high-risk in the sense, remember, these, we also have, these are under eighty, you also have the eighty-one to one hundred and ten and one hundred and eleven to one hundred and fifty. There's, there's multiple tiers. And the incomes we're talking about for these, you know, potential buyers are, because we're on the island, are substantial salaries. It's just not enough for housing on the island.
Again, I thought, I, I thought, you know, the PNS, if, again, I think we were confused or, or didn't word it properly, but all contingencies would have lapsed. I mean, you're a buyer.
Or that there wasn't a financing contingency because they were working, you guys were, there was discussion of, like, you guys were working with them to get funding.
My concern, yeah, my concern would be, you, you have seven homes under, under construction because of signed PNSs. Somebody fails, you know, another one can't qualify, another one just decides they don't want to go for it, and then the market bottoms out again, uh, which will happen at some point in our lifetime. And, uh, you're, there're going to be seven homes on the property with a two million dollar lien on the property. Yeah, again, that's worst-case scenario, obviously.
But that's what we want to avoid.
That's what we wanted to avoid. I, I thought was, I'm pretty sure you get construction money, again, for one dwelling, when it was sort of iced, that the person had their money to purchase it. So again, I mean.
You haven't signed a purchase and sale agreement with somebody who didn't have a prequalification letter from the bank. So initially, when you're going to buy a house, you go to the bank, you get that pre, that prequalification letter, and then you, you pick your house and then you go for your mortgage.
But the prequalification doesn't get you.
I've signed many PNSs, yeah.
The, the prequalification does not get you to closing. You have to have the clear to close before that. There's a lot of, the prequalification letter is one thing, and then there's the giant checklist of all the stuff that you have to do to show that you, you actually do, that's why it's pre-qualify. So getting the, getting the, the go-ahead at, at the end, that you're clear to close, versus the bank saying that you're pre-qualified, there's a lot of things that can happen in between where the bank can say, "Well, you can't show us X, Y, and Z, so you, you don't qualify."
I think we probably should keep moving, though. We're, we're not comfortable with this, clearly.
You're right that this is a challenging issue. You know, at the same time, um, asking someone, you know, having a little bank lock, or something like that.
No, but I think you, either that or you don't have a financing contingency. I mean, I, you know, I mean, there was a, we had a big discussion about, or I didn't sit on it, but I audited it.
No, it was a big concern.
Because it was a big concern.
Did not have.
Because the island, while there is demand, as you've demonstrated, and while it, it, you know, seems to be a project, um, that will hopefully be all filled up and, and will be a thriving little neighborhood, um, we do have, you know, examples on the island where there are four houses and one that was supposed to be a lot more, and it's a concern.
All right, and we, we'll, that'll be one that we'll, we'll work on in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
All right. Um, running through the last couple, or a few, uh, numbers eleven and twelve, uh, these are ones, eleven deals with, again, Mass Housing wanted us to re-categorize how we're referring to the, the monitoring, not the substance of it, but just how we're referring to it. And there's a new three, eleven B is, is putting a new finding language, and eleven A is the new condition. Number twelve is similar, but it's dealing with the regulatory agreement as opposed to the monitoring agreement. So eleven and twelve are the same things, basically, on those two different aspects of the state paperwork. And so we'd be proposing, you know, to change the condition and add the finding language respectively. Thirteen is a clarification. Um, right now, the, the condition says that no site work shall be done before the final state approval. And actually, what, we, we, the implication, as we had discussed, it was that we could start the site infrastructure. We couldn't start the houses until you got the final state approval, which is what the state requires. And so we're, we're proposing that language at the bottom of page six, top of page seven, to be very clear, that prior to the start of house construction, but specifically not required prior to start of site infrastructure, we'll get that final approval from Mass Housing. That, that was what I mentioned to you earlier. We want to start the infrastructure and if, but for those cup, these few issues that we're discussing that may need more time, if we can approve the others, including this change, we can get going on the construction of the infrastructure.
That was not my recollection either, on that one. I mean, again, the language, my recollection is, we did not want you to start anything until you had final approvals from Mass Housing. And that's why it's worded this way.
Yeah.
You can't even start the site infrastructure until you have all your ducks in a row. That, that's my recollection.
Mine too.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that.
That is of a concern, obviously, for the reasons I've stated, you know, you know, and we'll, if we have to continue talking about it, we will. But that, that was one, you know, I mentioned wanting to start, you know, you know, in the spring. Well, that probably wouldn't or couldn't be able to happen. Unless we could, I don't know what the total timeframe is. Obviously, there's some issues here that we're still talking about, but I don't know what the timeframe would be for. Assuming they agree with, we're all in agreement on the conditions, how long would it take Mass Housing to finalize that approval?
Well, we wouldn't be able to get it approved until we, until all funding was in place. Um, it would be, you know, it could be a year. But I mean, it's, uh, to get the final approval, you have to have everything done.
And that's what, how it was presented to us, exactly.
Because we didn't, I remember.
We had concerns about the, sorry.
Sorry.
We had concerns about the funding, we had, because you didn't have it. We had concerns about the fact that the infrastructure might go in partially, and the, you know, you don't get the additional funding, and et cetera, et cetera. And I remember pretty specifically that this, the wording that's in there now is there for a reason. I, I don't think it was a mistake. So that, that's a big concern, I think.
Okay.
At least for me.
Yeah, I remember, I remember you guys talking about that.
Okay. Well, let me go to the last one, as far as today is concerned. Obviously, you know, as we're talking about, some of these may impact how the project proceeds or timing. But, um, the last one, number fourteen, um, is, is a combination, is, um, if you recall, we agreed that if there was, at the final cost accounting, certified profit more than fifteen percent, that that money would go to the Nantucket Housing Authority to be used for their, uh, mission. And typically, as you know, under forty B, it's if greater than twenty percent. So we agreed to the fifteen percent and to the housing authority. The Mass Housing is not disagreeing with us agreeing to that, but again, they want it in the findings language as opposed to the conditions language. So I've tried to, um, work with all the parties here, and I drafted the new, the revised finding language in fourteen B, and then in fourteen A, which would be the condition language, I have tied it all back to the financial provisions of both the development agreement and the findings section. I don't know if that would be satisfactory to Mass Housing, but I'm trying to come up with language that would accomplish what they want, at the same time accomplish what we've agreed to and want to continue agreeing to, providing that fifteen percent. Um, and it also, and the finding also just clarifies how, um, you, as you recall, you did not want the development, if there, if there was a development fee, if there was profit, you did not want that until, um, after the project was complete. And we're clarifying what that means in fourteen B. And.
Yeah, there's no change to that. You're just clarifying it. And what, just run by, why findings versus conditions? What is the, uh, Mass Housing only has jurisdiction, if you will, over the conditions and not the findings and?
I won't say they only have jurisdiction. I'll just say, based on my conversations with their attorney, that that's all they seem to care about. Yeah, yeah. That's what they were referring to in all of them. And they suggested, I said, "Oh, can we do it in the findings? Can we have it in the decision, just in this different section?" They were fine. So I, I can't tell you why. I can just tell you that was something that was important to them. And you saw that in several of these.
Yeah, I did. Uh, do you have any insight into that, Leslie?
I had that question.
Findings versus conditions.
What does that mean for us as far as like enforcement, or is there any, any impact for changing it?
Well, the conditions are what are enforceable. But the findings are what you based your approval on. So I think referencing some of these things in the findings to say, "Yes, we reviewed it and yes, we based our approval on our review of this document," may be okay for some of these things, maybe not for all of them. But it's something that we should definitely talk about.
Should we get an opinion from town council on that?
Well, I think after we have a clear understanding of which items exactly this is going to include, we can talk about it and engage town council if needed. I mean, some things like the plan showing where the eighty percent units will be, where the hundred and fifty percent units will be, I mean, that to me seems like something that the board shouldn't be overly concerned with enforcing, but it's definitely something that's important and should be referenced in the decision. Because, you know, as Mr. Singer said, I mean, that's also important to Mass Housing, and they're going to make sure that the affordable units aren't clustered together. So I think, again, it's a case-by-case basis.
What about specific to this, Leslie? The, the profit provision, would that, I mean, that seems to me to be a condition versus a finding.
Which one?
The end where, where Andrew was talking about, that anything in excess of fifteen percent, profit goes back to, uh, Nantucket housing?
That, to me, does seem like something that's more important to be as a condition. But again, I, that's something I think we should talk about.
So we'll work, try to work through that one too, Andrew. So we'll work, try to work through that one, too, Andrew. I mean, we obviously don't want to change it, but you're not, you're not suggesting we do.
Yeah, we're not proposing, we don't want, we're happy with the way it was. We're just, but we need to be able to get that final approval from them, so it becomes important.
And I'm not, I'm not so concerned about, you know, whether it's called a, I, I get that, like, it's the same language in a different section. I just want to make sure that if we have an issue going down the road, that we haven't taken enforceability out of our hands.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we'll continue to work. Now, as far as, you know, continue to work with the housing authority, coordinate with Leslie and her department, and as necessary, town council. You know, some of these things, as I mentioned, you know, wouldn't necessarily be as important sooner rather than later. I, I think the biggest thing, though, from our point of view, in, in what you just said, would clearly be, one of the things that we, maybe we're under a different interpretation, is condition 31, which is the one about starting site infrastructure before that. That obviously is critical, you know, whether or not we start sooner or later. So we'll continue to talk, and, you know, we'll come back. I don't have a solution for that at the moment, but.
All right. Just, just to be clear, it was critical to us at the time, as I remember it. And, you know, there was a lot of discussion about it. So, just keep it in mind.
Okay. We appreciate it. I know we've taken a lot of time. You have a full agenda. Unless there are other questions, if you'd be willing to continue, it's February 13th, and we'll keep working.
I'll make that motion.
A motion is made in second. Well, let me, let me just timeout before we go to that. Was there anybody else in the audience who wanted to speak about this one? No? Okay. So, all right. So Lisa made the motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Continue the, to the February meeting. Any further discussion? No? All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. I gotta get rid of some paper. So we are moving on to, we don't have to do anything with the continued, other continued items, right? Leslie Eleanor? No. No voting, nothing. So we're gonna go to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sorry.
Just because of four voice of concerns before the meeting about continuing, if there are any specifically that you would like to be not continued at the next meeting, that would be the time for us.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that gentle reminder. Anyway, moving on. So, looking at the continuances, many of which are because we had struggled with quorums today. There are a few that have been lingering for quite a bit of time. Does anybody want to discuss those? Or what we should do with those?
Well, like 47 Monomoy, is that one, or?
Well.
Well, like 14 Wood Hollow, right? It said that.
Let's, let's go in order.
Okay, sorry.
Because we're, you're, let's, let's start with, well, we just, with 2313, Smith. We have not seen any new information in quite a long time. I mean, frankly, I think the presentation would have to be made from the start again, because I don't remember. It's got to be six months or something. So do we want to at least talk to the applicant and say, you either need to bring some new information, withdraw, or we're going to vote it on the next meeting? What do you think?
I'm not sitting on that one, so.
Was, was it not her today because of the lack of quorum, or she, she had not brought in anything new?
Lack of quorum, number one, although I gave her the option for the Monomoy rule, which Michael America complied with. But then she stated that she's still waiting for homeowners association people to submit letters of, I suppose, support, and had said that people were supposed to be dropping them off and emailing them, and she has not received.
Okay. Well, maybe we can light a fire. Let's, let's say that by next month.
That's it.
We're gonna take some action.
And her action deadline, which has been extended multiple times, is now February 28. And I informed her, your action deadline, as we speak, is February 28, so you'll have to come next month.
All right. So, 40-13 Manning, I believe they're struggling through the HTC. So we are all sympathetic to that. 4713 Charles and Susan Dragon, I'm guessing that was a quorum issue?
Quorum issue.
Where they were prepared to move forward today? Okay. We apologize. Hunter Trustee, 47 Monomoy Road, that was 6413. We ne, that was never opened.
Never opened.
So what?
Have you been working with neighbors to address the concern?
All right. They've been working with the neighbors for a long time. I guess it doesn't.
Well, their action deadline is February 28.
Well, what do they have to do with it, really? The neighbors. I mean.
Good question.
This is a zoning issue.
It's not going to be over the height, or it's not going to be over the height?
Yeah.
I tend to agree with you. Why don't we make it clear that we would like to?
Discuss it.
Discuss it, or have them remove it.
The neighbors don't care. We might care.
How would I be on the agenda for that?
That's their government.
Yeah.
Uh, Wood Hollow Road, yeah, that was the, is that, is that a quorum issue?
But this one, they were, they continue because they're, they're looking for the outcome of a proposed warrant article, so.
And what is that warrant article?
If it's a definition change to ground cover. If that is approved by town meeting, they will not need the relief that they have applied for.
Because ground cover won't be included under decks.
Correct.
That doesn't make any sense to me. But anyway.
You could have a giant, you could cover your whole yard in deck.
Stay tuned for the use of that one. Stay tuned.
And it could all be subterranean.
You want to live on the ground.
It's happened before. 8515. So we're not.
So wait, hold on. They want, their action deadline is February 28, and they want to continue until April. So do we need to do anything with their action deadline?
We'll get the, the apply for an extension and file with town.
Okay. So they'll, okay, they'll deal with that.
Okay.
I can't talk about the next one.
Okay, Lisa's not talking about the next one, thankfully. 8513 Foley Dolanor 8 Charter Street?
Did that even get open?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it did.
And they had quorum issues today.
Sorry. Okay, how about 8613? Were they prepared to move forward?
There were two issues. One, quorum problems. Two, you may recall, the board had a lot of concerns at the last meeting, and they are working on something different to bring forward.
And those two were just opened for the first time.
Yeah. All right. You're right. Okay, we've talked about them. So we are now on 01-14 Margaret Ann Ruley, 5 Franklin Street, for the applicant. We can all sit, right?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yep.
Okay. Rock and roll. Let me, let me wade through this. Okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
Hi. Val Oliver for Margaret Ruley. It's a very minor alteration to an existing house that was built in 1954. There is presently a brick stoop acting as the front door entrance, which is crumbling apart. So in deciding what to do with this, we talked about it a little bit, and she wanted to carry the roof over of the one-story sun porch they already have, about 10 feet, and make a new stoop, except out of wood, and have a little cover over it to act as a porch. What happens in doing this, as the house sits on the lot, it comes closer to the way. Now, the way has always acted as their driveway since 1954, so I know it's a way, but it's really not a detriment to anyone coming or going past the house because it's blocked off by a fence.
Nobody else uses the way.
Right. It's split down the middle. The Nickersons use their half and their yard, and the Ruleys have always used this little segment as their driveway.
And nobody else has.
If you have any questions about the longevity, Julie Reinamo, Meg's sister, is here to answer any questions.
Okay. That, that, bless you. What's the feeling of the board on initial?
It's a variance, right?
It doesn't, it.
So it looks like two houses use that other half of the way. Are they owned by the same people? There's a way.
Do you know that, Joel?
There's a driveway that, if I'm looking.
Yes, I do. On the, coming off West Chester Street, on the far end of the way, is the Nickersons' property. Gail.
Johnson.
Gail Johnson's parents own that. And there are actually, I think, four dwelling units there. There's a house facing West Chester Street, then there's a duplex behind that, and then there's a garage apartment is the third one in. And then there's, they're all their parking area.
You know, I'm thinking about coming off Franklin. I'm sorry.
If you look at here.
Coming off Franklin Street.
Of Frank, I don't have.
Where the way is, you're saying that half the way is.
That was.
Cover.
Make a new porch. That was our garage that's been turned into a little studio, the one behind the house?
No, no, on this side. See, there, there's the.
Oh, that's a separate driveway. Oh, so that's not the way?
Oh, the white one. The white one beside it is, that's our neighbors.
But isn't that where you want to put the porch?
No, no, no.
No. The porch is going where?
Do you want me to come up?
Yeah, that would be great. Oh, on this side, right here.
Yes.
Here's a driveway.
In that little corner. Oh, sorry.
Right, but I thought you said that that's where the setback to the way was.
Yeah.
It is. It's one, you know.
Yeah. The driveway is the way. The driveway is the way.
Right here. It used to go all the way through.
Oh, I see. So it has nothing to do with this driveway?
No, no.
Got it. I got it. But, so that this doesn't offer.
This driveway is the same as like where that car was now, and that was my brother and my sister's.
Is that Bob? Oh, my God. Is that your mom's car?
And this is, this is the neighbors, and we can see that it's been locked up for years.
Why don't, who owns the way?
Their car is.
Right.
Why don't, why don't we get the town to let you buy it?
We would do that.
Because typically, we do not, I mean, this doesn't meet any of the threshold requirements, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not saying it's a huge detriment to the neighborhood, but we're pretty stringent generally. There's got to be some compelling reason other than you want to do it. Anybody else feel it? How do they, how do you feel? Anybody?
I think I feel kind of similar to you. I think, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a roof structure. We'll give you bearings relief for this. In two years, you'll be back here wanting to enclose that porch, you know, turn it into a, some sort of enclosed porch, maybe.
Because I can't, because I don't have any ground cover left.
Well, even regardless of that, I just don't, you know, there's no compel, I don't even know how we would, we would, what would we set?
How would we?
What is the compelling reason, or how do you meet the variance thresholds?
Topography.
Hardship?
Hardship, and, what is the other one?
Soil, topography, shape of lot.
The lot's a pretty much a rectangle. It's flat. The only hardship is it's not a covered porch.
The house was.
The only thing is that, 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 you, that is the front door, and now you'd be putting the front door basically all the way around to the back of the house. You can't see it from the street. It's not going to impact anyone.
I, I, it's not so.
It's more of a legal question of how to, how to vote on a variance when we don't have.
Any.
We don't have any ability to do that based on the lot.
Or anything else. You know.
Right.
No hardship.
No hardship, right.
There's not a wetland nearby that's, you know, forcing you to do this. Anyway, is, let's go to the audience for a sec. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak about this? No.
I don't, I mean, you know, conceptually, I don't have any issue. I, I agree, it's an attractive addition. It's just, it's really what to grant the variance on, I think, is the question.
If we weren't coming any closer to the lot line, say I punch the steps in toward, you know, into the porch, like cut it in?
Then it would be a special permit, right?
Okay.
It's much easier.
Right.
Because you don't have to meet the standard.
Right, if you're keeping the three feet.
Yeah.
I can see my way, I think.
I mean, technically, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I could probably see my way to that, too, within reason, having Matt see your point.
She does have an angled lot line, though. So she'll have to pull it in.
Yeah, so it maintains the three feet.
Maybe you, you bring the steps in from the.
Other side.
The other side, from the back. Did you, can she just make the change to special permit, or is that something, I don't know if you applied in, in.
In the alternative.
In the alternative?
It just said relief as, as requested, or as needed to, to do the project in terms of the application form. So I think it'd love to kind of open.
Doesn't it have to be advertised?
We'll just take a moment. We'll look at the legal ad.
Yeah, take a look.
Okay.
I mean, the staff, the, the staff comments says applicant is requesting, if this is the same as the legal ad, it's not, but requesting variance relief doesn't. And also special permit relief. Anyway, we'll leave it up to Leslie, so.
Right.
It seems a shame, a little bit much addition to the building.
Aye.
You want to skip over us and come back to us?
I think the next one.
We shuffle and we scan. After you've been granted relief pursuant to sound of law, one to be, one to be united to two, from side yard setback to front, pursuant to one to nine sixteen, to allow the construction of a porch to replace the existing stoop, as well as two steps, which will further reduce the pre-existing non-conforming setback from three feet to one foot. Applicants also seek special permit relief for alteration and expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
So can we just lump this into that? Yeah?
Well, we can lump what? We don't know what it's going to look like yet.
Well.
It's going to look the same.
Couldn't we just lump in that you can't be any closer to the property line than?
Well, the roof line has to change.
Right, well, that's an HTC matter, isn't it?
That's an HTC matter.
Could you keep the steps towards the back of the house?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what we.
And then you wouldn't have to cut them in.
Right.
Yeah, but the, the lot line angle, so it's going to have to be narrower.
Yeah, to be clear, it's not just the steps.
It's not going to be the whole.
Right, she couldn't go any closer than three feet, the entire length of the lot line.
Yeah, so the roof is going to have to step in. So it'll have to return and then become a smaller hip, but it's not, it's difficult to resolve. So I'm, I'm open to whatever the board thinks. I don't have an issue with granting relief with that stipulation that can be no closer than.
To the way.
Yeah, than three feet. But if you feel like it has to come back, that, to me, that becomes an aesthetic issue, and that's the HTC's jurisdiction.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, too.
I don't see that it's, it's going to look that much different. It's just going to come in off the edge a little farther.
No, I don't have, I don't.
Well, yeah, you can either pull it in that way, or you could return back and be as long.
No, I think we'll just do the simple.
It's just hard to tell with the site plan how far you're going to have to put it back to retain that three feet, but.
But as long as we limit it to the three feet, then you'll have to work that out with the HTC.
Get a surveyor to do that.
Is that someone's motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
So what is the motion?
To approve the relief as requested under special permit, that the new porch get no closer to the way than the existing three-foot, is it a stoop, or whatever that is?
No, the corner of the building.
Oh, the corner of the building.
Yeah. You okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Yep. Oh, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, can you include in your motion that they submit a revised site plan showing general location?
Yes. Could it be a, a survey site plan?
Mm-hmm.
And not just you drawn, drawing onto a plan? I think it should be executed by survey.
Before we vote, is there anybody in the audience who wants to talk about this one? No. Okay. So the motion's been made in second. Did any further discussion? No. All of them, Okay, I cannot, thank you. I can't sit on the next one. Uh, so I, I, I don't know what's going on, there's only three people.
Michael Merle can vote on this, we'll talk.
And, and you've, Melissa, you've talked about, you know all this.
I, yeah, no, I have, there's, um, it's, we're under a really tight contingency with the town, um, and the contract, so we're, we just got a lot of time pressure. Arthur and I are probably both going to be away on the 13th, um, so Rachel gets to do it. Um, the, um, we'd, we'd love to...
I'll stay.
We'd love to flush this out, um, today if we can, because if there's concerns of the board, we're trying to work with the HDC at the same time, and, um, it, the fact that Michael will weigh himself back in again in February means that we'll come back and try to wrap it up in February.
Okay, so who is the ranking member and wants to take over? Hopefully, with a coup d'etat, so I don't have to come back, no.
Wait, who, wait, who's sitting?
It's just three.
Just three?
Yeah.
Right.
Secretary, Secretary.
Holy...
So Susan, take over.
And, and we will, I will repeat as much as all as we need to do next time on the 13th, but to the extent that the three of you who are going to be part of a five, four person board anyways, have concerns, I'd love to find out about them now, try to address them between now and February, hence the reason to go forward today.
Um, so it's file number two dash fourteen?
Yes, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We are contract, um, under contract with the town to, um, purchase the property at 22 Federal Street, known as the Mooney Building, um, with a contingency to see if we can do what we would like to do with the building. Um, I think you have a set of plans that were, um, submitted, I have some here, if it's helpful to have them on the table. Um, we are pending before the HDC. I don't know if there's anyone here in the audience, all right? So I think everybody's...
Get rid of that.
Sorry, knocked it over once.
The plan is to, uh, we have, we need to make it handicap accessible. Right now, there's a lift that gets you to the front door, but doesn't get you inside, really, and certainly doesn't get you moving around the building. Um, the building needs a tremendous amount of work, uh, it's in very poor condition, um, I'm not upset about that. The, um, building right now is non-conforming, I can crack it out, because I'm sure that we are. Dimensionally, the building is non-conforming, um, as to, um, setback, it's, it's basically on the property line, along the inside, uh, next to the Broad Street neighbor. Um, it's, I think the closest point is like 2100, it's off the property line. Um, when we make it handicap accessible, we also need to add an extra stairwell for higher egress, so we'll be removing this exterior stair. The plan will be, the plan is to use the building, um, ultimately for an education, for educational purposes. We hope that we'll be able to put three classrooms in this building, and some administrative offices for our goal of having, um, some off-season, um, educational use here on the island. We should be looking at the mass, and some of the university students here in the region. That's our goal, it's a launch goal, that's going to grow organically, that's not neat that's here tomorrow. Um, in the interim, we'd like to, so what we're asking for is for you to, as a regular commercial option, what it's been and what it would be in the future. Um, the uses by floor are to restore a third floor apartment, but with a couple of the E's, and I for fire on the block that was submitted.
Don't you need a fire escape for that?
We don't, apparently, we're okay. Um, I have asked it about five times, because it's a little off to me, but, um, there's, it's a one-bedroom apartment on the third floor, and a habit hold on more than two people, and one, it needs egress, is apparently okay with that.
Uh-huh.
So that's what we are... It actually will be a safer means of egress than we've probably ever had in that building before, because it's a fully sprinkled building, uh, fireproofed in terms of the stair column. Um, and, but, so we would put an apartment on the third floor. Um, the first and second floors would be, um, these office uses, um, or, as I say, the educational uses. So you see them labeled on this floor as, as classrooms, but it's classroom slash office.
My story, how do you do that?
It's just dead spaces.
It's under the E's.
Sometimes, this is, these are the...
Might be mechanical space, hot water heaters, other stuff.
Really, the only usable space is really this little, uh, some type of cross shape in the center underneath. You get nice coloration with these windows.
And you have to have the elevator go all the way?
We don't need the elevator to go all the way up, but we need the mechanic to clear a lot of bar for the elevator mechanics above that, so you have to lose the...
That's why there's no access to the elevator.
Portion of the third floor, the elevator structure. As all these buildings that were trying to put elevators in, from the HDC's perspective, we can't go through the roof, so we can't make the top floor elevator service. So, and then losing a portion of the top floor elevator. So...
Is there work in the basement?
Yes, so the basement, um, is here. The request is to call it a, to use it as a cafe in the basement. Um, ultimately, this would be a student lounge, the biggest need that we've found for the university programs, or they have some late-night, non-alcoholic related places for students to congregate. Um, and, um, so that's the ultimate plan for the basement. In the meantime, we would launch a brand as some sort of, um, cafe is the only thing I can call it, or, or talk about it. So in the application of the restaurant slash cake out, which is permitted use, um, we have no intention of having anything alcohol related in it, but, um, again, until the uses that we hope to put in this place really evolve to demand it, right now they're only in one semester, not both semesters, and we'll be open to the floor. So it's in the application of the cafe. This, work-wise means that we will need to excavate, and, um, this is not sufficient, we don't have to do that. And we've been working with the human on the plans to make sure that we've got a fully accessible entrance. So, again, the plans are a little hard to read. Um, it says low head height here, that's not usable space, because what happens is on the entry level, you come in, and then the elevator's a half step between the first and the lower level. So you come in to an inside space, access the elevator, it's going to take you a half step up to the first floor, and then a half step down to the floor. So that's why you get that money, sort of designation. So the proposal would be to take down the addition portion of the building, the little wing that sticks out towards Jersey, towards Broad, and away from Broad Street, and to build a new wing, which would be two stories. Um, the HDC plans, we had submitted a slightly smaller, lower elevation. Um, this is what you would see from Federal Street, the elevation from Federal Street. The porch exists, the main mass of the building exists, this is the little entrance to the basement which exists, this is the new section that would be constructed.
And that's under 30 feet.
That's under 30 feet there. The HDC actually asked us to make it a little taller, um, to get the way they wanted the windows to align, and to get rid of some horrors that we were trying to do there, and it's solved. So that's the major construction change to the building. The second real change to the building happens along the rear property line. In order to accommodate legal egress, we're taking that same element that you see on the other, on the Broad, on the Federal Street side, and replicating it on the western boundary to hold this massing, which essentially gives us that farthest stair on the inside. So that's located right here. So the easiest place to sort of see that change is on the block line, by having around the most four points. Um, there's the existing, so it's going to come a little wider here, a little closer to the street here, fills in this block here, and then we lose this non-conforming piece here. But this section right here goes up only. This section right here is the part that's more favorable that goes all the way up. This is the two-story mass. So in the end, um, we are eliminating some of the non-conformity, pulling the property back. The closest point when you get the property line enough, which is a curve in it, um, or an angle point in it, and so the closest is 2.8, the rear, 2.9, and at the front, 3 in the middle. Um, we actually, I mean, I thought we were going to lose some of the open space, but we're actually improving the open space to just over 25, so it goes, our request is that it goes from being a brick parking area to a courtyard, and that we are allowed to create the parking.
All parking, including handicap parking?
Yes.
So there'd be, you'd use the Federal Street handicap parking to services building?
Yep, and we would eliminate this to curcut, so that a public space would be able to
An additional parking in the street.
Be restored on the, on the Federal Street side. Um, and I think the way it works from a handicap perspective is that if we provide, if there's no parking on site, then we're fine, if we provide parkings, we have to provide with a handicap accessible.
If there's no par, if there's no handicap parking on site?
If there's no parking on site?
If there's no parking on site.
I don't have to make a, create a handicap space.
Space.
If there's parking on site.
You'd have to have, it'd have to be handicap, then accessible, I think.
Right. So what we're, the parking that's on site now, there are, um, there's an existing special permit, that allows the creation of three non-conforming spaces. And they...
Three.
The, um, concern that we have is that we, you know, our launch goal, as well as the current goal, is to get people already in the town, who are not with the destination of the market. Um, and we would be, um, hoping that you would be willing to waive that. The courtyard that's, we've talked about a lot with the HDC, has been to create some open space in the town that could be utilized by public, or utilized by people who are in the building, to get some sort of breathing room there. Um, we definitely should, we didn't show on the plan, but we have talked about adding bike practices in the space, we would want obstacle-free parking there, um, and this...
Are you suggesting that the courtyard be open to the public?
Um, I don't have, I'm not sure in any way to sort of close it off, it's, it's just a brick area off of the public street, it's not like a little private garden, or anything like that. So, um, the people using the building would be able to use the courtyard. It's just like all those little, little lifts and crannies of public, of open space in the downtown, where if there's a bench, somebody throws and sits on it. I think that would be our approach. It's not, it's not a terribly gay space, um, it's just designed to be a, um, an alcohol space that exists in the downtown, it's an open space.
So that present, if it's for the uses, the, the existing office use, it would be 13 spaces, would we?
We'd be waiving, oh, because of the new commercial use in the building?
Well, it's already, yes, already an office, right?
Right, right.
And so, I don't know if the storage is added or not.
This is a requirement, parking requirement here.
Oh, right, the apartment, sorry.
Right.
Is that the new parking is 21 for office?
13 to 23.
Oh, right, right, right.
23 for, if there's, yeah, 20, sorry, I guess, 20 to the office.
21 for education.
For education. Right now, it would be 13, for the existing.
Right, sorry, I was...
And this will be a commercial building, so we're really looking at the 23 number, not the 21 number?
Yes, yes, for the waiver.
For the waiver?
Yeah, for the waiver, right.
And, and there's no requirement for a loading bay?
Again, I, I think we threw in a request to waive it, just because...
Okay, I didn't see it on the list here, in terms of...
Yeah, there's, there's that particular part of town, I remember, loading is shared.
Uh, upon Broad Street, there's at least one large loading bay area that everyone shares.
Does the cafe require one?
Well, you have the takeout requirement of five spaces, but, is there a takeout involved in the cafe?
That's what you're saying, right, it was going to be used for takeout.
Right, okay, all right. So that's where the six spaces, one for one employee, and then five for the takeout?
Yeah, no, I was asking about the loading.
Uh, yeah, okay. There's six spaces designated to the cafe. So I, I would assume if it's takeout, there're five, five of those six would be for the takeout requirement, and one for the employee requirement.
Yeah, I think, I think we just...
And then there would be seating?
I think we just give it as a restaurant.
Okay, okay, okay.
This is spoken and speaking.
Okay, I want to, I want to be sure you get the, you know...
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's designed to have 40 seats.
The parking waivers you need.
Designed to have 40 seats.
So there'd be more, more spaces required than the 23 then?
Yeah, I think the 23 is based on...
If, if there were takeout.
If there were takeout.
If there were takeout, if we subtract the five for the takeout, then we're back, back to the numbers you're talking about.
I think Melissa pointed out, this is, this would not be intended as a, as a destination restaurant.
Right. But we can't control that. I mean, once it's commercial use, we have, we have nothing to say how it's used, other than that we've said you can use it for this, this particular purpose.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, in the answer to, you know, the space that it is open to the public, it's going to be open to public.
Of course. I would think if people wanted to go from the town building, and if they were there, they would run over there and get a cup of coffee.
Yeah, I know.
And then they go to the cheese and wine place next door.
And would have exactly the same amount of...
And then up to the languidock after that, and then back to the cheese and wine shop.
And would have exactly the same amount of property as the languidock.
Exactly.
Okay, so you do, so you don't want to do takeout?
I, I don't believe I ask for a property, so, um, I think it's, you know, we look at 40 seats in there, if we're doing it...
You could always come back if that became part of the, the equation, but due to, due to the fact that you're in this tight timeline, you really don't want to...
It's really set up as a place to come in and sit down, it's sort of a place to hang out.
It's not so you can't take your coffee out if you, you know, if you walked out the door.
They want to have, we want to have grid wireless, we want to have places to be, we'd really love it to be, you know, sort of an under 21 kind of place, because we would, you know, want to see it as an alcohol, um, kind of place, but...
They can go next door to the cheese and wine shop.
They get to go next door, or they go to the Rosenbaum.
Right.
They, you know, the, the idea of what's, trying to find what's missing in the town.
Certainly, I have a condition among other things that we know.
Yeah, I mean, I, seriously, that would be fine with us, that's not what, that's not what this is intended to be. And again, we can't vote today, but they sent you guys how concerned against it, you're concerned about how it's up to you, so...
I think you've clarified the parking component, which is the one thing I was trying to understand what was happening in that basement of that building. The rest of it's pretty much what, what's happened historically in that building.
It's getting a little bit...
Building's getting larger, but you've, you've taken away an intensification of one non-conforming traded for another, which is better because it's off the lot line. So I think that's a, that's a positive component, and, and the building really needs some, some attention to it. It, uh... I have to say, I parked in there at night in time, so I'll miss that.
I, I don't have any problem with parking at all. I don't, I don't feel you need to create parking spaces downtown.
Yeah.
It is what it is down there, it's the same as everything else. I like the fact that, you know, to limit it to no alcohol makes sense to me. I mean, if that's not what you're looking for, that's just not, that's not...
Well, they would have to get a liquor license, but we could put that as a condition of, of our, and we can't vote today, but I mean, that's one of the things that we could, uh, arm ourselves with.
You know, and back to the, the parking, I mean, it's a function of, in my mind, it's a function of whether you guys want parking or not. If you want somebody to drive up there who, who might want to use your space, who needs a handicap spot and can't find it, that's, you know, that's your loss, really.
Could you dedicate that, your space on the street for handicap?
We can't control that.
You can't control that?
Try that in another project, I can't, I don't have to, I have it right now.
All right, they're two across the street, but you still have to get...
Right across the street.
Over there.
So we're hoping that that would be adequate. I think the concern is that if there is a space on there, people get taken up by people in the same person, or it becomes, it becomes more of a problem.
It's a hindrance, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And I'd much rather have that courtyard space available to people who are using the board.
And street spaces are always useful in a building.
Yeah, certainly, this, by getting rid of curcut and creating a public space on the street, that's great, it's going to do better, I think, than you're trying to keep that space private.
Yeah. Um, does anyone in the audience have anything to say? Four? No?
I guess we continue.
We just need to continue.
So, any other?
I, I don't have any real objections in the scope of the project.
All right, um, do you want to make a motion to continue?
I'd like to make motion, continue it to our next meeting in February, I believe, the 13th, is that correct?
And then, Michael will review the tape, but I can also re-present to answer some questions, just, like, encourage people in the meantime, or come up with a new word.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, continue.
Thank you for your time today.
As much of these back as we can, so you don't have to make new ones.
I think I can, I can have some apps in the back, and...
Shall I get that back here?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
What, uh?
How did Susan do?
Excellent.
Excellent.
I think, uh.
I'm grooming her.
We're grooming her for the position.
Alright.
Now Lisa's bummed out because she wants to be, Lisa wants to be next chair. She's already been lobbying me amongst other.
That's always he wants his payoff.
Yeah, I'll pay you. Alrighty. So, we're all here? The gang's all here? Uh, zero-three dash fourteen, Joseph and Marcia Aguar, sixty-eight Fairgrounds, Fairgrounds Road.
Mr. Chairman, if there are, Mr. Aguar, I understand it's needed to be presented at this hearing, although I left him a message to that deck, so.
Okay, well, we won't open it. Maybe he'll show up.
He will show up. I did leave him a message.
Okay. I like that. We check it off. Uh, four dash fourteen, Helen Lynch, eleven Milk Street. For the applicant. Uh, they didn't know either?
I, I was under the impression they wouldn't be here today.
Okay, well, we'll skip them too.
Moving on.
Moving on up. Five dash fourteen, Phil Oslie, twelve Broad Street. I saw Phil. There he is.
Phil's here.
For the applicant, just state what you want to do. I have to wade through my paper here. Milk Street. But go ahead, I, I look, go ahead. I'm ready.
Yeah, I would, um, I'm Phil Oslie. I wonder if we could just delay it a few minutes because Bob Newman is on the way here now, and he's got the plan.
Okay.
We have copies.
Oh, you already have the plan?
Yeah, we have, we have plans.
But do you, do you want?
If you want to wait for, uh.
No, that's okay. I, I, my army is on the way. Yeah, that'd be fine. Can I see it, please?
He's owned the building for thirty years.
I, I thought it would change this.
It doesn't change.
I hate that.
That's annoying.
What doesn't change?
When you flip it, the page doubles up on mine.
Yeah.
What do you mean doubles up?
Say what?
It's probably just static, you see, yours does. Probably just the setting.
He's saying that he gets two pages.
I get two pages. That's probably just the setting. Anyway, we digress. Phil, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready. What we're, um, doing is we already got an approval from the HDC for a, a lift that would go on the north side of the building facing the Whaling Museum, by the front, the first door of the juice bar.
Excuse me.
However, when we talk.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. A lift?
Yes, we got an approval to put in a lift, a handicapped access to the juice bar.
Okay.
Which would be on the, the side facing the Whaling Museum, the first door of, of the rose, of the, uh, juice bar.
Is it a mechanical?
Yes. However, the, the ADA people didn't like that, even though we got approval. They said they didn't want the person who was going to use the lift to get in the middle of the line, because, you know, the lines are pretty severe at the juice bar, especially in the summer. And they didn't want the focus of attention to be on this person opening a door, which would have to move, move people away from the north side of, on the sidewalk, actually push them onto the road, have the guy get in the lift, and the whole machinations of doing that in front of all these people. They would rather, they said why, they suggested we put a takeout window around the corner to the back of the building, uh, through a window that's already existing, so that ju, anyone that was handicapped could come up to the back without being in any line at all, and they could get served. It would only be, the takeout would only be for handicapped. No one else could use the takeout ever. It's only for handicapped people. And that's what we're trying to do, to, to make it easier for the people in a wheelchair not to try to get into a crowded building with a lift, rather go around the building and there's a, a handicapped access, and that would be it. That's what we're trying to do today. Before we can go up to the ADA in Boston, we have to come to you first.
So, it's simply a parking waiver?
Right.
Well, a, a timeout here. I mean, that, that roof, the roof structure is in the road layout.
Yeah, that's why we're here, because for us to get this approval, the ADA wanted us to have a covered roof, so that the people in the wheelchair don't get wet when they're in line.
What about the people on the side of the street?
They're going to get soaked, anyway.
Fair enough.
Oning was, wasn't anything that you, a temporary?
The HDC and Ron, the tenant, being in the northeast corner of that building, an awning with the wind coming from the northeast, it wouldn't last too long. So, they, they, with the ADA, thought that maybe the best thing to do would be to have a structure there. Now, in that respect, after we go to you, if we get approval from you, then we have to go back to the Board of Selectmen and get, and, um, get a document from the Town Council saying that we are responsible for that structure, because that would be out in the road. It would be over town property.
Is it over the, where the parking is, basically?
No, it's over the sidewalk.
It's over the sidewalk, yeah.
It's fairly unusual.
But are we able to grant, so we wouldn't be granting the ability to.
We're not being asked to.
We're only, we're only looking at the parking.
Right.
That's what we're being asked to look at, is parking.
Alright, so we don't, we don't have to concern ourselves with the, the roof.
Which has been approved from, by the, um, HDC, but we have not been approved yet.
By the Selectmen.
Right, because they have to, they have to word it, their lawyer has to word it, so that we're responsible for any problem.
It's on town-owned property, right?
And then additionally, after this, we have to go to Boston
Right.
To, to the handicapped people, too.
Make sure they're okay with it.
Right. And they might not be okay with it.
Right.
But they're the ones who proposed the takeout window to you?
Yes.
Those windows are, as I remember, are fairly high, so you're going to retrofit that somehow?
This is a new window.
No, the window is going to stay the same height. The, uh, we're going to hire a midget.
Jesus. Oh, timeout.
No, excuse me, we're gonna, um, basically, the people that are, that are going to service the handicapped person is going to have to bend down to get to them.
It's much lower.
No, it is not much lower. If you, if you go there, it's, it's.
It's, it's a new window, it's thirty-six inches off the ground.
It's a brand-new window that's going in, and it's much lower than the existing window.
Phil just said it's an existing window.
I think it's an existing window.
Not according to the HDC-approved plans.
Oh, well, can I see it?
How's it going to work on the inside, though, because, I mean, not that it's a
It'll be really literally at the ground.
Oh, yeah, let's see.
But it'll be at the floor.
But how's that going to work, because on the inside?
You'll have to bend down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be like a foot off the ground.
I was, I was wrong with the window. I thought it was an already existing window. It looks like the window is coming down, and that was already approved?
Yeah, well, it's part of the, this application.
Well, we don't know what was approved. These are just, do they say approved? Not that we care, but. Alright, let's, uh.
We're only talking about the parking.
We're talking about a parking waiver of what? One space?
Five spaces.
Five spaces. And it's only for handicapped access. And it'll, it'll be.
What triggers the change?
What, yeah, because it's already a takeout establishment.
Yeah.
There wasn't, there's no takeout there.
No, the whole establishment is takeout.
The whole establishment is already takeout.
Yeah, people go in, buy the ice cream, and leave.
Right.
So, why did this trigger the, I think, we're going to.
Mr. Chairman, each takeout station requires five parking spaces, so adding the takeout window is to add a new station. So, based on the parking requirements, then by law, it requires five more spaces.
Okay, thank you.
So, I believe there was some commentary from neighbors or somebody that, uh, blah, blah, blah. Where the hell is it? Heck, is it, uh, something about the trash, mitigating the trash litter? I mean, do you, you, do you typically assist in trash mitigation in that area? I mean, you, you don't have any barrels outside your establishment, because you can't.
No, they put them out, uh, after they close at one in the morning. And then the pickup is at five-thirty in the morning.
But you have nothing.
I'm talking about people who leave.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, customer trash. Customer trash outside.
Yeah.
Like people that are sitting on the benches outside, eating ice cream and then leaving.
Well, the, the juice bar and the Rosen Crown both have people that every twenty minutes or so have to go out and clean up anything that spilled, or clean up the garbage.
There really, unfortunately, isn't a space on that, on those two sidewalks.
Yeah, most people go over to the Whaling Museum and.
That's where I sit.
Or across to the steamship.
Or, yeah.
Go across the strip there.
It's called the strip.
When I get my one ice cream a year. Uh, okay. You missed some. Alright, so anyway, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak about this? No. Okay. What's, what's the pleasure? I, I, I'm just curious, are the other alterations taking place, that little V-shaped entrance?
Yes, we are, um, the, the, the side again, facing the Whaling Museum, instead of having the two doors, there's going to be one double door.
Oh, so that's what triggered?
We're trying to eliminate the, the one door that's on the east side of the building, which, when the, the town lowered the sidewalk there and made that step very unreasonable.
Okay. I was just curious. Um, alright, well, what's the pleasure? And, uh, do we have any problem waiving parking in town?
No.
No.
I don't. I'll make a motion to approve.
And conditioned on, it's handicapped, for handicapped access?
Only.
Only?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
I'll second that motion.
And do we have to put any construction issues on this? Construction timing issues, or no?
No, I think they'll be.
You're going to be done.
Done, not to impact their business.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue. It's not a big enough project, even if they weren't done, but you shouldn't be able to put a roof over your.
On the doorway.
Well, the door isn't under our.
That's not our.
Okay.
With an reason.
Okay.
Okay, anything?
Absolutely not, nope.
Okay, so, uh, motions are made. Who seconded it?
Second.
Jeff seconded it. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Now, uh, zero-six fourteen, Lynn Bolton as owner, and Anticat Theater Institute as applicant, five North Water Street. For the applicant, esteemed.
Stephen Cohen for the applicant, Mr. Chairman. I hope what we have in front of us is relatively simple.
Okay, sit down.
Substantially similar to a permit that you approved last year, um, but I'll just go through a little background. So, the, Anticat Theater Institute purchased the property that you probably know as the Demby Real Estate, and converted the main house into offices, and the little cottage is a bathroom and public, public restroom and, and storage area. And then the front is where they put up a tent to have, uh, straight plays, as opposed to musicals or other kinds of things where there's amplified sound. And last summer, we had a very successful, uh, season from July through September of showing, uh, plays that, that were consistent with the permitting. And, and then in the off-season, during the, um, Anticat Arts Festival, they ran a, um, playwriting workshop during that time. There were no complaints that we know of of any, uh, noise or disturbances. Uh, the, the facility produces essentially no trash, because there's no food. Um, even though it was permitted for food, it wasn't, it wasn't done. And one thing that we're doing here is dropping the request for food, because they decided not to. Um, so, after a very successful first season, what they'd like to do now is go and build a permanent building, but the, um, permitting, the design and permitting and, and construction, uh, timing is going to require, basically, we're just starting the permitting now with the construction, hopefully, in the fall. So, what they'd like to do is have one, is to keep the continuity going, have one more season, uh, where there's the tent, and then start construction in the fall. So, the two changes to the tent permit that you approved last year, uh, that we're looking for here, or actually, I should just point out that the only thing that we're asking you to approve is the extension of the use of the tent beyond thirty days. You probably know that tents are, under the bylaw, are allowed for thirty days, and, um, additional time requires a zoning permit. The MCD that's associated with this permit is handled by the planning board. The planning board imposed substantial conditions last year. You imposed substantial conditions this, uh, last year as well, and, uh, the, um, application that I provided consolidates those conditions, um, in a, in a way with some minor tweaks based on what we're looking for this year. So, we're looking to expand the time on both ends, the, moving it earlier to May fifteenth to allow for the building, for the, um, tent to get set up before the summer season really starts, and to allow for a little more rehearsal time, and to allow that construction to happen, when really there's very few people here. Um, but we wouldn't necessarily start the actual plays and performances till, till July, but they're looking for, uh, June to do practices and rehearsals and those kind of things. And then after Labor Day, essentially, the, uh, the plays continue a little bit, but, but by the time you get to October, they're, you're in the Anticat Arts Festival, and they'd like to do the, uh, workshop or, or other participation within the festival that they, that they did last year. And you approved a special, an extension of last year's permit for that specific purpose. So, if you look at those two put together, we're really just talking about, uh, putting up the tent a little sooner. The additional thing is that there was a condition by the planning board, um, that, uh, that provided for, um, six days with one dark night. And because this is such a quiet activity, um, in terms of impact on the neighborhood, we're, they're done at nine-thirty, they're just doing evening performances, basically seven and nine. Um, we'd like to do shows seven days a week. We don't know that there's really any, any impact on anybody dealing with that. And to the extent that there is, I'm not really sure it's a zoning issue so much as the, as related to the question in front of you as to whether or not it should be extended. It's really more of a planning board issue. Um, so, I'd ask you to renew the permit that you issued last year with those two changes, the adjustment to the dates, and not having that, that restriction.
Thank you. Uh, there was, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this? No. There was one letter.
I did see that letter. They missed the whale shrub. I missed the whale shrub. Um, the plan for the building involves, uh, green space in that area, but we can't, we need the, we need the tent in the park, and we need the, we didn't, we didn't want to eliminate the parking, um, and put the tent there, just to save the green space, but the plan for the, uh, development involves green space in that area.
So, the whale's going to?
I don't know that the whale's going to come back, but the, it's, I don't think that it's sitting in a, in a, in a, uh, storehouse, uh, waiting to get reinstalled, but the,
It's a shame.
Yeah, it is, it is a shame. But the, um, we expect. We, we expect that the. Yeah, the, the planning board will, uh. Permit requires a waiver of open space and any open space. We expect that they would want some open space and that that would be the area where they would want it, both because it would look the best and it provides for the best traffic safety and those kind of things.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the...
I just have a question for Steve.
Go ahead.
The plan that you submitted, the same plan that was submitted to us last year, so I'm assuming the tent is the same size?
That's right. The tent is the same size. And in fact, you might recall, I don't recall whose request it was, but that location of the tent was adjusted, was set back.
Set by us.
Yeah. You adjusted our original proposal. And this mirrors, it's an exact replication of what you requested last year.
So it's the same plan?
Yeah.
Looking at exactly the same plan as we did last year?
Yeah. It's actually the same plan, that the stamp on it is...
Well, that's why I saw the dates.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
That is correct, yes.
My recollection, you guys were in here a little while, not too, too, too long ago, asking for a little bit of an extension last season?
That was, yeah. Because we were planning to close or the season for the plays ended a little after Labor Day and the Nantucket Arts Festival said, hey, we'd like to have you participate in the festival. It's in October. Can you get an extension and do something? And so...
At that point, I recall quite a few people being in here speaking in support of the activities this past summer.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. I will... I don't have a problem with it, but I wouldn't want to make it a yearly thing. I think you're in process to get the real...
That's right. We're at the planning board on Monday.
Yeah, because I seem to remember...
I mean, it was gonna be a one-time deal.
I specifically avoided guaranteeing that because I know how permitting works. And I thought unless we're getting permitting now, we'll be back one, at least one more time, which is essentially, you know, what happened with...
Why didn't you reveal that last time?
Yeah.
You're hopeful the permitting would go faster?
We didn't know what would... It could have been a disaster last year and we weren't coming back. But instead, it worked really well.
Yeah, I just told you about it.
Yeah, I would expect if we came back for a third time, you would have, you know, more concerns. I don't see this as being perpetual.
So your dates now are May 15th to...
October 15th.
And last time, they were June 15th, September 15th?
That's right. With the extension to October 15th that you granted?
I don't have a problem with it because of so much, I mean, whatever, because of the neighbor support and it's... But I do remember clearly, like, this is a one-time thing. We won't be back next year, so...
Right.
But I get that permitting takes a long time.
Things change.
Yeah, things change, whatever. But I don't have a problem with the extension of the time either.
I don't either, but I don't think the third cut would go all the way.
Well, hopefully, the permitting process will.
Yeah, I expect we'll go through the planning board somewhat quickly, then we'll go to the HDC and, you know, we should be able to gather shovel in the ground in the fall.
So you haven't even started that process yet?
No, it's filed, but the hearing's Monday.
Oh, so the HDC, you haven't tackled any of that yet?
There, we...
The chicken and egg thing?
Yeah, well, right. I mean, before you spend a lot of money on an architect, you want to find out what the planning board is gonna say because they, you know, could laugh at it.
Depends if you're an architect or not.
Yeah. That's right.
What your workload is.
Yeah. The plan is to try and design something.
Just don't come back a third time.
Please don't.
I hear you loud and clear, and my clients are here, too.
Okay. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve as requested. Lisa seconded, Jeff made that. Lisa seconded. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck. All righty. Moving on. Did anyone show up that was supposed to be here earlier?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just one technical question. Are you granting the relief requested or are you granting the relief requested with conditions? Because we just need to know when we get to the planning board whether or not there's a list of conditions that you've imposed or if you're only dealing with the date.
The same conditions we proposed the last time.
I thought it was all these conditions that you wouldn't...
Yeah, and those are fine. I proposed them. I just want to make sure that that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay, as I said, did anyone show up who we skipped over?
Agwire?
No? Okay. So we're going to 714, Mark P. Williams, Tammy Lynn Williams as owners, and Brian Diggle as applicant contract purchaser, 86 and 1/2 Somerset Road for the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Michael Wilson on behalf of Brian Diggle, who is the contract purchaser of the property owned by Mark Williams. Brian is present and Mr. Williams is present as well. This property, as you see in the application, is the subject of a major commercial development permit with conditions. And that's because of the size of the project and the common ownership. My client is purchasing a portion of the property that's subject to a major commercial development. And that takes that parcel out of the planning board's jurisdiction and places it before you, in your jurisdiction. So what my client is proposing to do, and you have the updated plan in there, it would be... Do you have a larger copy of it? I do not have a larger copy of it, but I... Well, I don't know.
No, I wanted something bigger.
I can certainly supplement the file. But what they're proposing is to carry forward the conditions of the major commercial development with respect to being a good neighbor. The parking that's required, there's two spaces proposed and a loading zone. Given the corner that you see on the plan, the 24-foot aisle width can't be met. And so that's what we're looking for relief from. And the proposed application would contemplate my client's continued use, which is currently occupied by a landscape contractor, my client's a lawn care. He has one employee in the winter. He's a single, self-employed guy operating his business throughout the rest of the year when he's busy. I know that there's some letters, I think after... The administrator had provided additional information about the MCD permits and the conditions imposed on the property by the MCD. I won't speak for them, but I think that their concerns were since addressed. And I did receive a series of email correspondence from the administrator. That seems as though at least one of the two is comfortable once they were explained that the conditions are gonna be kept. And I know two abutters are here as well. And speaking to one direct abutter, he's in favor, I believe, of the application as it's proposed, and he is here as well, Mr. McGowan.
So the plan we're looking at is a 1993 plan? Because that's the only thing I'm coming up with on my iPad here.
You should have the site design engineering on...
It's right in the beginning, Mark.
It's right in... Okay, I was...
Page 215.
All right.
Where's the 24-foot aisle width that you're...
Thank you. If you look at the two parking spaces?
Yeah.
The way that corner comes in behind the metal building that stays on the Williams property?
Yeah.
Backing up, and, you know, the location for the plot plan and for the purposes of zoning of the loading zone isn't going to create a barrier. So parking can really be where the loading zone is. And when he needs to load and unload for his business, arguably, the aisle width is there for his parking if he parks in the loading zone and then moves his car when he needs to bring a truck in.
Mm-hmm.
But this is not something that's gonna require significant loading or unloading at any level. It's just the nature of the commercial use that requires the loading zone.
Okay. So what specific relief are you asking for? Just the aisle width? Is that it?
No.
No?
The aisle width is one.
Yeah, sorry. I see it now.
The waivers in the MCD permit are carried forward or are being requested for here in the zoning permit.
So you want all the waivers that were granted for the MCD when it was an MCD to move with the subdivision, if you will? Is that what I'm hearing?
Just on Lot 198 that was created, as well as the conditions, the screening of the parking areas, the off-street loading facilities, the off-street parking requirements. Not that there's proposed to have parking on the street, it's just the parking spaces and the aisle width. Not going to change at any level for use or conditions. It's just that we have to be before you because it's coming out of the planning board jurisdiction. So we're not asking you to offer any additional relief or we're not asking to reduce any of the conditions that are on the property by virtue of the permit. Just asking that the relief and the permit come from...
Like, do you want both lots now?
So...
No, just Lot 198, just...
Just Lot 198.
Just the lot that can...
So what happens to Lot 196?
197.
Or, sorry, 197.
Doesn't it still contain...
That's the property that'll be owned, that's still under the MCD, that's the Williams property.
Well, you're, if I'm hearing you correctly, any of the conditions and/or waivers that were granted for one, the overall MCD will...
Continue.
Arguably, continue on to 198.
But it won't be an MCD anymore.
It won't be an MCD. I understand that.
There will be an MCD, but Lot 198 is coming out of it because of separate ownership.
And the only, the only, like, these conditions...
Will continue to affect both lots.
We are not, and you cannot affect the MCD, which is gonna remain on...
Right.
On the existing Williams Lot 197. The only thing we're asking is that you impose them on Lot 198 through a zoning special permit versus a planning major commercial development. Is that right?
Well, I suppose, and is there a... Do we feel a need to go through all of those conditions and/or, or do we have faith that the planning board did the job? Go ahead, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, the special permits that are needed are for contractor shop, a landscape contractor, light manufacturing, and interior or exterior storage and warehousing. In addition to that, what we carry forward would be screening of the parking area and driveway. And that's because there's a shared driveway that straddles the lot line. Physically, we can't screen that, so it's a technical thing. And then the other would be the aisle width, which you all just talked about, is behind the building. The conditions that were in the planning board decision that we carry forward, if you choose to do so, would be that the applicant's responsible for grading Somerset Road four times a year. Part of it is dirt in this vicinity. So that would be from Somerset Lane Raceway Drive down to the site. That the site shall be closed to the public, so just be the owner and his employees. And there was a condition in there about screening the rear of the lot from the abutting property. I don't know if that's something that still matters. It would be screening it from Mr. McGowan's property.
It's already screened, isn't it?
And at the time, someone was leasing the rear of the lot. I don't know if that still happens.
Mr. McGowan.
And there was a condition that vehicular access to the leased portion could not be through the site. It had to be from the McGowan property. Those are the only conditions that I think would still apply. The other things relate to the Williams property that he retained, the deal with storage and other things that aren't taking place on the site.
So the access issue, when Mr. McGowan rent leased it, he had to access it from his property? So we wouldn't want to continue that? That was a condition?
No, the access is by the shared driveway that's between the two buildings only.
No, I thought Leslie said when...
When Marty owned it, he had access from his parking lot into that property on the back side.
Right. Never mind. That's what I thought she said. She said only.
If he's still leasing the back part, and I don't know if that's happening or not.
No, my client's...
Well, I'm assuming Mr. Dickle is...
So that doesn't apply?
My client's going to be occupying it. He's not going to be leasing it to Mr. McGowan.
So that doesn't apply at all? So it would only be from the shared driveway?
So is there any... Is there any, like, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to continue the waivers and conditions from the MCD on a special permit on a property that doesn't qualify for an MCD? You know what I mean? Like...
Why would we declare our own conditions on a lot that wasn't eligible for an MCD? Because every time they come back to do something, they're coming back to us and then we have to look at the MCD components again? Doesn't make any sense.
So you want to list...
Let's put all the screening components in that we normally do, hours of operation, manufacturing, air conditioning, if that's a requirement. Let's put all of that, our normal language, into our decision because this lot will never be an MCD.
Right.
Works for me.
Like, I just don't understand why you would give MCD designation sort of to a lot that's not...
Trying to keep it consistent for the neighborhood, which the planning board thought to do.
I get that, yeah.
We can provide the requirements ourselves.
No, we can piggyback on all of those plus anything else we might want to add. Is that what you're saying, basically?
Yeah, get rid of any discussion about taking MCD stuff from another lot onto here. But put in our general conditions that we do for buildings for light manufacturing. And give them the waiver that they need for the aisle width.
How do we feel about the... Right now, I believe it's, you know, it's not light manufacturing. It's not a contractor shop.
Isn't it a contractor shop?
It's Mr. McGowan's landscape contractor shop.
Well, what I mean is, there's not, there's not work going on in it, per se.
You got repair vehicles or doing repair work?
Just the mower and equipment of the contractor and property.
So it is a residential area.
And that's to be debated.
Well, we'll say it.
The shop is right behind it.
Across the street is the residence. And that abutter is here. And Mr. Williams resides on the property that's still subject to the MCD, so that's residential as well.
Well, wait a minute. It's an MCD, so there's a huge commercial enterprise on that property?
Yes, and it's also where Mr. Williams lives.
Yes, I've been there. But certainly, the commercial aspect of that property is bigger than the residential aspect of that property.
No, I'm not talking about the property. I'm talking about the area. I mean, esteemed Mr. Glidden lives about 100 yards away.
The screening and all those things we normally do when...
So, no, what I was getting at, do we care if it's a light, it's light manufacturing?
But that's not what the intended use is. The intended use is for lawn care.
But they're asking for it.
It's not a contractor shop.
They're asking for light manufacturing, correct? Or not? Am I-
That's in the-
That was the MCD.
In the list of the available uses of the property.
What does Mr. Dickel want to do with it?
He's a lawn care specialist, and he was a landscaper.
So let him tell us what he wants to do with the property.
Mr. Dickel?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Brian Dickel, I own a landscape company called Native Grasses, and I'm looking to purchase property to house materials as well as store equipment, and have a small repair shop for that equipment.
Any outdoor storage?
Uh, no, nothing substantial, no.
All right, well, nothing substantial, no.
Meaning, meaning, vehicles we park there, but nothing as far as material.
No material outside storage, okay.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And are you willing to eliminate the light manufacturing aspect?
I currently don't have any plans to do light manufacturing.
It makes a difference to us.
Yeah, it makes a difference in terms of stor- sound attenuation and all that.
Sure.
Um, okay. Uh, let's go to the audience briefly, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak about this? Go ahead, just identify yourself with the tape one at a time.
Hi, Marty McGowan, thank you for hearing this issue. I'm the abutter at 88 Somerset Road, and Mr. Dickel does a great job, and look forward to having him as a neighbor. I have no problem with his parking or turning around radius request. As far as the property goes, it's, he's going to be the ones stuck in the back. The, our concern, or my concern, is strictly with the letter that we received regarding street, um, access to the property. It's a narrow road with drainage concerns, as well as an active egress for the rest of that neighborhood. Over my years of experience being there since 1993, I've received multiple advisements regarding, it's a, there was a sign there that said no parking either side. Due to the size of the, uh, front of his lot, I feel that there is some, uh, concern for me as to on-street parking when the back becomes full. So drainage, space availability are my concerns. No concerns whatsoever about his ability to turn around in the back. There's quite a bit of room back there. So those are my concerns, and I don't know how any of your decisions would address that. I think that's about it.
Well, we can certainly-
There's no drainage on that road now, is there?
We can put a split rail fence along the front of the property line on Somerset, we can do a number of different things.
But the, but the, but the owners are obligated to grade the road four times a year now?
The road is partially tarred, so actual grading of the road is unrealistic at this point.
Right.
Um, so that, that particular point leads me to, the tar has increased vehicular speed, we're a little concerned about that. And perhaps some sort of soft safety, um, flat berm?
Oh, we're discussing whether a speed bump, or a speed table, or something along those lines.
Might deter additional, um, speed back there, but whether or not that becomes safe.
I'll just introduce myself quickly, Cam Gamo, abutter across the street at 87 Somerset. I initially came here with concerns about some of the parking waivers, but it seems as though those have been addressed. Everything that Brian has talked to you guys about, I'm, uh, I like his idea of how he wants to go forward, but I want you guys to respect, and it sounds like you are, that it is a residential neighborhood, you mentioned Mr. Glidden, a couple hundred yards across, there's myself, 20 yards across, Chris Connors 30 yards across, that this is a residential neighborhood, and take that in consideration with what you're looking to approve here.
Are there specific things that, you know, the current operation and/or the on-
The current, the operation as it currently exists is, is fine with boat storage, with what Marty's doing across the street. My concern is that it would turn into more of a contractor shop one day, with what Brian seems to indicate, it's not going to go that way, but I just want to make sure it's protected as such. And just that Brian, he and I spoke about this today, realize it's a residential neighborhood, and just increased traffic is, you see kids walking to the bus every morning, you see kids walking from the bus every afternoon, that in this commercially zoned side, that there's a residential zone side on the other side, and so that you guys take that into consideration when under, when looking at the special permit.
I don't know to what extent we can do much with speed bumps and whatnot. I'm pretty sure we can't do anything, so, I mean, you can certainly stipulate you can't bark out on the road, but again-
Do you think that probably someone else you go to for that?
Yeah, that's not really our purview.
Yeah, I suspect it was the unknown when they received the abutter notification, and after they've had a chance to talk, and Mr. Dickel has explained what his intended use is going to be, and Mr. McGowan having experienced with Mr. Dickel directly, I think they've come to an understanding that they're all in the same neighborhood, and it is a mixed-use neighborhood. My client's willing to abide by any prohibition of parking on the street, he has no intention to do that. In fact, there's a vegetated berm there, which he's going to keep, because it helps with screening, and he's not-
Um, how many, I mean, just so that we have an idea of what we're talking, like, how many, how many employees does he have? How much traffic is he gener- are you-
He's had, from what he tells me, he's had one employee seasonally, including himself, that would be a total of two.
So how many vehicles do you suspect to have on the property?
Two.
Just two?
Wonder, can we limit it to that?
Well, they're only showing us two parking spaces, right? On the plan?
What are you talking about, repair, storage, is there any equipment, any other vehicles stored in the building, or?
No, the, the building is, um, hopefully, is a warehouse for materials and house, what is it being stored in, but no vehicles.
Okay.
There is some other neighborhood opposition, have you by any chance been in touch with Mr. Cassidy and/or his mother, or?
I've received a series of emails, and I believe-
She withdrew her, Mr. McCain.
Right.
Mr. Cassidy is her son, and I got that email too late to put in your CBA packet, but she did, as long as the conditions of the current, of the special permit that existed, uh, was issued in 19, I believe, 94, if I have that prepared wrong, that is in the packet, and conditions also in the MCDs are applied, in terms of the intensification of use. Basically, what they want to see is that no change will occur in terms of the expiration of use, as Mr. Campbell and Mr. McGowan also iterated.
I have an email dated January 7th, 2014, 2:30 PM, from Ms. Kane, and I can paraphrase, but "public notice made in reference to the past relief granted, I appreciate you sending the history of this, of the previous permits granted to Williams, and the updated site plan, I withdraw my objections to the current application for special permit relief, provided that the conditions previously attached to this property, to the Williams, remain in effect for the new property owner."
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Oh, didn't you have your hand up in the back? No?
Yes.
Calling people out now.
It's all a response.
So we have to, do we have to-
Can't see now, I'm sorry.
So we should work on conditions then?
Yeah, let's, let's move on, I mean, in terms of conditioning, I mean, the, Mark, you want to take the helm on that one, since you were speaking about it?
Well, I, I think we should apply the, the normal conditions that we apply to any storage and warehousing building in a residential area.
No, absolutely no work on Sundays.
Absolutely no work on Sundays, right? And that there'll be no outdoor storage, that there should be no light manufacturing, that the, the building is specifically used for, uh, storage and warehousing for his landscaping business.
He did say some repair.
The repair is inside the-
Inside only.
Contractor shop versus light manufacturing.
Right, that, this is a, a building for storage and warehousing, not for light manufacturing.
Not for anything else.
Uh, that the, our general screening components, hours of operation and the like, be applied to this particular property. That the vegetative buffer on Somerset Road is best as possible to be maintained with proper sightlines out of the driveway, I think it's, you know, safety considerations are, are key to that. And that we give them the waiver requirement for the aisle width needed for the space. Space is unique in its layout, and I think that proper turning around inside the site can be accomplished within the layout. So do, do we want to speak specifically about the screening aspect of it? I know there is some screening in place. I think we need that on a plan, in some fashion, what that screening is, whether there's going to be any fence requirements, split rail, or the like, to define areas that would preclude outdoor storage. And if need be, get a look at the conditions that were applied in the MCD, and bring them forward in our own conditions, not, not necessarily relating them back to a 93 decision that was made by another board.
Okay, so having said, having said all that, which was great, what do we want to do? Do you want to continue to see a specific site plan?
No, I don't think we need to continue this, I think we need some site plan improvements that, that need to be in place prior to our signing a decision, unless other members of the board want to see an actual site plan that shows the screening aspect on the lot. And then, I think we need to continue.
Go ahead.
So like this, sorry, I'm sorry, like this wa- so, so waiver, like, one of these waivers says the owner applicant is the only employee of the business, so we're not, that's not true, because-
That's why I don't want to tie them into the MCD at all.
Right, so, so like, I don't want to, so we can't just say the same conditions and waivers, because that's going to then preclude him from having his employee, so-
We need to put our own-
So do you want to take a, some time to, to reread the Planning Board decisions, so that we-
I don't think, is, are these the only, these are the only ones that you-
Day of relief?
Yeah.
That's it. And in speaking with Mr. McGowan, he's advised me that there is screening, vegetative screening, running the entire length of the property between the subject locus and his property, as well as the, southerly?
Mr. Williams and I have a 12-foot hedge between our properties with a six-foot, fence inside of it, which is what I was required to put up for safety purposes. So there's a 12-foot hedge with six-foot meeting our two five-foot green space requirements that go around that outside edge of the property. That is on his south border, facing Raceway Drive, and it's on the east border of the property. There's no room for screening to be installed for added parking back there, between Mr. Williams' building and his existing lot, but as far as, you know, security fencing of some sort, that's up to you guys.
I think I would want to see the screening that exists, and then what we would want to propose, but I think, for me, it would be helpful, instead of us going through this MCD and trying to pick out from it what makes sense and what doesn't, I, and I don't know-
We're going to need a plan at some point that shows the limits of, of any, any new screening on the lot, and the existing screening on abutting lots, or something that, that we can sign off on.
Yeah, definitely, we need a plan.
This is the relief that is required as far as the MCD.
Just these, and that these, and this is the, these are the ones that are included in the MCD? The only ones from the MCD that you're interested in?
That would apply to Lot 198, because a lot of the condition, you said it, hot storing boats, not having to go into the public to kind of use their boats, it's got to be a, an restriction on employees, and they didn't want it to be an arena, or a self-serve boat, so that's, most of those conditions, most, all the conditions of the MCD really impact what's being done with boat operation, and the screening which is in place, which is an requirement, which is McGowan's place.
And it exists, along as he said, the entire border between his property and the subject property, and then the southerly, east other.
Okay, so then, so then, then my concern becomes, the abutters that had an issue with it, and have now said they don't have an issue based on the conditions of the MCD continuing, like, the one condition that I saw about the waiver being that the owner applicant is the only employee.
Now, can I, can I make a suggestion that we maybe consider continuing this, so that we can take the time to go through the past decisions, get our condit- I, I don't think your client is going to have difficulty ultimately getting an affirmative vote, we just want to do this right, and to go through this now, because I agree with you.
Right, I agree, I'd rather have a list from them, though.
Right.
Here's, here's the total conditions, here's what we want, here's what we don't want.
So if somebody, um-
Because it doesn't make sense for us to do that right now.
Okay.
There's too much, too many decisions to go through, too, right?
Yeah, and I also feel like I don't, like, if, if the, if the, if the abutters' objections are gone away, based on all of the conditions, like, not all of the conditions or waivers are continuing, so I feel a little disingenuous about that, and I want to make sure that that was explained clearly to them.
I understand your interpretation, but I think it's, you're looking at conditions that don't apply to this lot, that wouldn't be seen as being disingenuous if they said you can't have people bringing their boats on your property when it's not a boat storage facility.
I'm not really about the boats, though, but I'm talking, just specific, just the one that stands out to me is this, the limitation of the owner, or the, that there aren't any employees, that it's only the one person, when it seems the general concern is traffic and all of that, I, am I making sense, or am I being nitpicky?
No, you're making perfect sense, so we would just like it to be a little more clear.
Who was bringing the boats on and off the property, that they didn't want, but I understand the board's position, whatever your pleasure is, supplement.
Let's just try to make it a little more crystal clear, we're, we're just-
I think if you had a list, it would totally-
List of the conditions.
Does the, does, and, and a clearer site plan showing vegetation, et cetera, um, will the site comply with open space, does it need to, you know? That should be on the site plan.
That should be on the site plan.
Not, not just a-
We need to see a driveway apron that's bituminous, that that's a bituminous surface that's out there on the road. We need to see what screening is going to remain along the road, whether it's the existing vegetative buffer that's there, or whether they're providing other screening. We need to understand the waivers that we need to apply to this decision. We'd like to have hours of operation, any restrictions on operation on Sunday known as part of this.
Well, we're giving the heads up, that's going to happen. No light manufacturing.
No work on Sundays, no outdoor storage.
And then the other conditions, we just want to meld, make sure we're all on the same page, we want a site plan that shows that it complies with open space, as the apron, screening, et cetera. So-
Thank you.
Having said that, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, continue to February 13th for additional information.
Okay.
A second.
Susan's seconds, any further discussion, no, all of them fair to Scott.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. 04-14, Lorinda Lacane, 347 Matticut Road, where the applicant?
Oh, this is, this is one, eroding bank.
Time, time, I want. I'm going to need to eat Susan's builder's book.
I've only got two bites left, I'm sorry, man.
Totally kidding.
We have to be out, we have to be out of here at 4:00.
You know what I have? I have a thing full of baby snacks.
Let's go, we need to, we need to keep moving.
For the gummy bears?
Yeah, I do have some, they're not coming back.
Tell us what you want to do.
Hi, I'm Zoe Lacane, I'm representing Lorinda Lacane, the property at 347 Matticut Road. We have to move our house back due to rapid erosion, due to coastal flooding. We've already lifted the house up on cribbing, we're requesting variance for all setback requirements, so that the dwelling will be moved from the current position all the way back onto, towards Ames Avenue, onto our land, and land that will be conditionally granted to us pending the outcome of your decision with Andrew Vorse, for the Director of Planning.
Oh, like a yard sale, this little triangle?
Through the yard sale, exactly.
Well, was it a yard sale, or I think it's more like-
No, it's a town, uh-
The license agreement, like, grant, you know, that thing on Baxter Road?
It, it will not be their property, it will be-
No, will not be their property.
Okay, you know, by no-
Right, I believe the original conversation was, for when this was going to occur, that there was some precedent there based on Baxter Road, too.
Yeah, licensing agreement with the town.
So maybe it's a combination of yard sale, like parcel two and three are yard sale?
It looks like a-
And then the other one?
The corner is kind of in it.
Doesn't really matter. How do we feel about this? I don't think you need a waiver from every setback, do you?
Um, just all the requirements pursuant to 13916.
Yeah, if she's not on her property anymore.
Well, I guess you're right.
Right, it was mostly issues with the side yard, and I think the distance between the street and the property.
Yeah. I don't know, should we make a motion?
What happened, yeah?
Well, on Baxter Road, we said if the town was willing to license the land, that we would not object.
Yeah, and he came back.
He came back.
And he came back.
He got the license.
He got the license, he came back, and we said, great.
All right, well, let's move on.
Is there anybody in the audience?
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak about this one? No. Uh, okay, so, what if the beach starts accreting? Do they have to move their house back?
That's a town, that's not a-
That's not our problem.
No, I hope we have enough of them.
We only have 16 minutes.
Everyone discussed next time, Susan, when you're chairman.
Permanently, yes, so this will be my new home dwelling, this is it, we're moving it as far back as we possibly can, so this will be our instance.
Okay, I think, I think I heard somebody wanting to make a motion, who was it?
Me, I'll make a motion to approve the-
Grant the relief as requested?
As requested.
Perfect, who wants to second it?
I will. I will.
Susan. Paul, anybody, any further discussion? No. Paul is in favor, say aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We've got to step on it.
I can't sit on this.
Because we have to be out of here at four, is that right?
Oh, I can't sit on this one either. Okay. Actually, I could if I stipulate.
Oh, no, I'm just, I wasn't barking at you, Ed, I'm just saying, is that true?
She wants one, one, she's the chairman for one application. And women.
I just don't want to shortchange anybody.
I don't know. Okay, anyway, after Susan's, you know, aborted attempt to take over, nine fourteen, Susan Reed, Peter Schmid, Nancy Kimmitt, its trustees, and Schmid Realty Trust. Who's sitting on it? ETLB and SM.
Well, let me, let me stipulate that I did work for the prior owners. This is, uh, I think, uh, someone who's under agreement to purchase.
Purchase done.
I have-
The purchase is done?
Yeah.
So, there'd be no conflict?
So, I, I have not worked for the current owner of the property.
All right, I don't think that's a conflict. If the, if, maybe if the sale hadn't taken place, maybe.
Right, and it was still the current owner that I worked for.
All right, so we have four. Let's go. So, wait a minute, timeout. Are you okay with four?
How are you feeling today?
I'm hungry.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with four.
I'm very hungry.
I know what that means, right? Four versus five. Oh, yeah, you do, I forgot.
Did anybody agree to read in on this in case?
Yeah, Michael did.
Okay, cool.
All right, let's go.
Bert Hopper, on behalf of the applicant Gloria Jurecki, um, the application proposes to add a kitchen to an existing auxiliary structure on the property, converting it to a dwelling. Uh, the structure is non-conforming due to setback, and there are no proposed changes to the size or height of the existing three hundred and seventy-two square foot structure. And that's-
It's just a change of use then?
That's it, yeah, change of use.
Okay, is, uh, I was, I, I, I'm curious, do you then have to, if you change the use?
You have to bring it up code.
Yeah, you've got to bring it up to code, no windows on, on-
Right, the, the only part of the building, the part of the building that's, that's in the setback is not fenced, fenced rated.
But you don't have to upgrade all the other things to her constraint?
But you'll have to put fireproof sheathing underneath-
I have to, I've got to do, there's got to be substantial upgrades to the building-
Right.
Per building code.
Right.
But that's the only part of the building that would have to meet that, that fire.
Are you putting a new foundation under it?
No.
All right, um, is there anybody in the audience? You guys just-
Do you have second dwelling approval on it?
No.
From the planning board? No? Okay. HCC approval for any alterations?
There's no alterations.
No alteration? Well, you're going to be making some alteration.
But no exterior changes?
No, I won't be making any alterations to the outside of this building.
Voluntary.
Well, you're going to put your fireproof sheathing on that wall, but if you're not adding any fenestration, it's a non-issue.
That's right.
Well, you wouldn't need HCC approval to do that.
No, it's just going to push you a little closer to the setback.
I mean, soon you will. The sheathing choice will be under their purview soon.
Soon.
Don't put that in the minutes, please.
No.
Okay, I digress. Um, I don't, I don't have an issue with this, I don't think. I think there's something, you know.
It doesn't look like the parking shown on the plan is in conformance with zoning. Um, and we should at least stipulate that they have to provide the required parking, regulatory parking on the lot.
What if that happened through the planning board?
Uh, it could very well as part of, when they go to the planning board for the second dwelling approval.
Yeah, you'll have to provide parking.
It just laid out right.
Yeah.
It's just that, you know, this-
There appears to be plenty of room.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. So, no, nobody else want-
Can I make a motion to approve their-
You may. Please, please. That was it? Okay. Who wants to second that? Mark, was that you?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion? No. Paul is in favor.
Aye.
Say aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, guys, what are you, you just hanging?
Oh, I'm-
I mean, it's a slow day. I know that.
I already voted. But I made, I made a mistake. I thought-
All right, timeout, timeout, timeout.
Timeout.
What is the procedure here, Leslie? We just got to do it right. Because I saw you guys chatting. So, what's going on? Do we, we're not reopening this.
I don't know that we can. It's not properly noticed.
Like, we did for, remember when Lori made a mistake and we-
No, I don't. Who was Lori?
Larry, did you?
Yeah, we did not, we did not cut her any slack.
Oh, well, you don't have to cut us any slack. I just want to explain that, um, we were coming for the parking variance, and when I, uh, explained to you earlier, I was asked if this was handicapped access only to the takeout window, and I said yes. Apparently, I was wrong. The ADA people in Boston don't want to have reverse discrimination.
Right.
That was the only difference in what I proposed.
So, did we condition our-
We did.
We did.
They said they don't want reverse discrimination.
We did, and that makes sense to me, that you, you don't want to have to send the disabled people to a specific window.
It was offered up, and so we just went with the flow, so-
So, that, could that be a technical amendment next time?
In this particular situation, there was no one in the audience here to, no neighbors or anyone here to listen and comment.
But we don't know that? I mean, just because they didn't speak up, they might not have heard something and-
Plus, I mean, we didn't, we did not, it was not even announced, the discussion when Lori tried to reopen, had a mistake she made, so, um, I, I, I feel a little uncomfortable doing something for one that we would not do for another just a month or two ago.
When hers was something that she said and we interpreted one way and she meant it to be the other way and we had a miscommunication, like, this was a clear-
In the other case, there were clearly people in the audience who were concerned, and they left, and she came back later. In this case, there wasn't anyone, I think everyone in the audience was identified as being here for something.
But I, we don't know that.
That's true.
I just-
And the other, the other problem we have is, I mean, I made a mistake, we're on a really bad time constraint now, because we still have to go to Boston.
That's why I wanted to suggest this. You go to Boston and you tell them that we made a decision that was handicapped accessible only, they're going to overrule our decision. I, I could almost guarantee you, they're going to say, no.
It has to be open to everybody.
It has to be open to it.
Yeah.
Could we defer to the state making that kind of?
I, I think we should schedule it for the February.
And just do a technical-
It's going to be the same timeframe. Is it, it's, I, I just don't want it to impact the timeframe anyway.
Well, if we could schedule it for February thirteenth and have a decision ready to be signed at meeting, so that you can start your appeal period right there.
So, that means another notification?
Yes.
Because we're opening up a new file.
Which is unfortunate, but I-
I, I think that's probably the cleanest way to go about this, so nobody comes back and appeals it. We just don't want you to-
It's an extra month, isn't it?
Well, it, it won't be an extra month, because if we have a decision ready at the next meeting to be signed off on, it's not what time it normally takes for that decision.
Let's move on.
It might just take a week, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so-
So, we're willing to sign a decision next month, maybe.
We got eight minutes.
Yeah.
I, I would be sure.
I would be, sure would.
Yeah, because we were going, we were going to sign it within that month anyway. All we're going to do is change that language. Uh, okay, so, other business, two thou, two thousand and fourteen warrant articles, do we want to discuss those or do anybody read them?
Seven minutes.
Does anybody care? I know the answer.
I don't have it changed in my office.
You what?
I don't mean that my office is changed.
For better or worse.
The one you're just building?
Oh, do we have to-
Yeah, but you already answered.
Ed, do we have to vote to continue the two, Agwire and the other one that we didn't hear?
Oh, yeah, well, we didn't technically open them.
We didn't open them.
So, we're both, but, do we can, do we need to continue them without opening? Isn't that what we normally do?
Yes.
Yeah, so we vote on that?
Yes.
All right, so, can I get a motion to continue, uh, Agwire, which was, I don't know which one it was, three fourteen, till the February meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That was Susan. And Mark seconded it. Okay, any further discussion? No? All of them, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then I believe the next one was, uh, four fourteen, Helen Lynch.
Motion.
Eleven Milk Street. Mark makes the motion, Susan seconds. All of them, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, the other business, Leslie, do you want to just, you know, quickly paraphrase the, uh, any zoning articles that we would want to focus on or?
Um, I'm not necessarily, I'm just in particular, I don't know, but I'm just watching and well, well, filled on.